Today.
We're good?
It's the only thing he won't allow you to do.
That's right. He said it's my room tonight, didn't he? All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the New Coralisle City Council Works Session for November 13th, 2019 at 6:00 PM here at the New Coralisle Fire Station. Mr. Bridge?
Yes. Call to order.
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilman Cobb?
Here.
Councilman Cook?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lindsey?
Here.
Mayor Lowry?
Here.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Here.
Councilwoman Agleson?
Here.
All council members are present?
What about Shammy?
With the exception of Mr. Shammy.
They're not all there.
Chris, Mr. Shammy?
He's not here.
No present. Sorry. I put his name down. All present except Councilman Shammy.
Thank you, sir. And tonight's invocation will be by Councilman Cook.
Please bow your heads. Our heavenly Father, please bless us this evening as we try and do the work we are dedicated to do for this city. Also, please wrap your arms around all of our first responders, particularly the deputies who patrol this city and provide us with our protection. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here is a fresh pot of coffee if you ever like any.
Do you have a lot of people in house right now, chief?
Kind of motion the council to move our meetings to here every Monday night?
Let's do it.
Man, look at that. Coffee, everything. Only two people in the station right now.
Okay. All right. Actions on minute, non-communication, city manager's report. Any comments from members of public before we get moved?
Thank you.
Mr. Grimm?
The capital improvement plan, didn't we just do this a couple months ago, a month or two ago?
No, we amended it for, if that's what you're thinking of, amended it for the trucks that we're going to purchase for the city workers. This is done usually every year about this time.
We amended the one for 19. This is the one coming up for next year.
Right.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Do I ask all my questions now or can I ask questions as we get through these things?
Well, do you have something that you want to ask now? I mean, we can-
Depends on what the explanation you target is.
Okay. Well, we can. I don't, you know, I don't mind taking the questions as long as we don't, and I'm not saying cut you short, I just, I don't want it to get real lengthy. So, but exactly. So, yeah, that's fine as we go, as long as everyone else is okay with that. All right. Comments from members of public, community reports?
This is other business.
Other business.
All right. You get caught up here. A few months back, I had sent council out this packet that we have here now. This is the blue thing. It's Miami Valley Lighting. This is the company that we pay to light our streets, that we do the assessment for the street lighting on. I met with him a few months ago, and he is proposing that we change out our current Cobra heads to LEDs. What that will do, will give increased visibility. There is a diagram on here that shows a comparison between the LEDs and what we currently have. He will be coming on November 18th to our work session to discuss this, and there'll actually be a resolution for final read, the first meeting in December, for the street lighting contract that we do every year. The only difference this year is they have a checkbox on that contract to inform them if the city wants to go ahead with this LED changeout proposal or not. Some things I do want to discuss on here, and we'll go more into this on Wednesday when Mr. Stallman is here. I wanted to bring it up tonight so council would have the information, hear a little bit about it, maybe formulate your questions in on the 18th when Mr. Stallman's there, we can ask him more in-depth questions if there are any. The first page is our current inventory and pricing is what we currently pay, so that $93,000 is what we assess our property owners every year for the street lighting assessments. Page three goes on to talk about the benefits of the LED light, what they do enhance light levels, increase satisfaction and performance. LEDs considered natural light and reduces energy costs and maintenance costs. Page four is when you have the high-pressure sodium compared to the LEDs. So, it looks like the right side image is the high-pressure sodium and the left side would be the LED. So, I don't want people to think that the HP, the high-pressure sodium is the image right below it. Switch it. The LED is clearly a lot more visible. On page five, it goes into talk about the environment encouraging LED insulation. And on page six, this is really what I wanted to talk about. It has to do with the renewal agreement. I want the council to look at this because, say, we decide that we don't want to do the LED changeout, and we just keep it as is. A one-time 5% increase on all full-service prices will be effective on 1/123. So, basically, if we don't do the LED changeout, they're going to increase our prices by 5% on what we currently pay, which in return will have to go back into our citizens because we assess them for the street lighting. On the seventh page, it compares the current cost versus the LED cost. And there is a difference in numbers here where it says 78 and around 78, and the front says 93. This number on page seven does not include our decorative lightings. So, there's about an additional $14,000 that goes on for decorative lighting. That's not in this number. So, if you do review this later on, and you see that number on the second page, that's 93, and you see these are 78, because it's not including our decorative poles. So, I had some questions for him when I first talked to him, because when you go down on page seven and you see the annual estimated decreases and monthly decreases, it's really not a lot. You're looking at an annual decrease of $212, and these are all estimated numbers, and a monthly decrease of $17.67. So, I was curious as to know why there was such a minimal cost savings when the LED is supposed to be a lot cheaper to operate and maintain than the high-pressure sodium that we have now. And the answer to that is because they, the front 93% of the LED changeout cost. They're only charging us $9,725 for the one-time changeout fee. They're taking the remaining 93% of that. So, his answer to me was they got to make some, a little bit of their money back. So, that's what I wanted to present to council tonight. We are not making a decision on this tonight. I did want to inform everyone so when he is there at our work session on the 18th to discuss this in person, council can have some questions geared toward him. And then, again, on the, when we do vote on this street lighting renewal ordinance with this company, we will have to make a decision on December 2nd. Do you have any further concerns about this project, potential project?
At what point is his cost going to be covered and we're going to go back down to the normal rate?
I don't, I know that's a question we can ask him. I don't think it's going to be reduced. I don't think we would do this for five years. I don't see in the next agreement term they're going to reduce it significantly, to be honest with you. But it is something that we'll have to do. Now, what I want council to really critically think about is it's a one-time, almost $1,000 charge, okay? But the difference between the high-pressure sodiums and the LED from a visible standpoint increases safety twofold, threefold, don't call me on that stat. Just makes it a lot more easy to see out there. I don't want to put you on the spot, but you guys said this changeout in Bethel, correct? And your residents were, they liked the change?
Very pleased.
Very pleased because of the enhanced light?
Enhanced lighting. It's a safer, you know, environment from the bright lights on our streets. It's good PR for the city to do something with, you know, using taxpayers' money to upgrade for better.
Sure.
Keep them safe.
So, even though we're not seeing this drastic savings on an annual or monthly basis, we are seeing such an improvement in the overall quality of lighting.
The LED lights last longer, I think, than the sodium. They don't heat up. They don't go out. I know a lot of the sodium lights, when they get to a certain temperature in the summer months, they just turn off for up to maybe 15 minutes before they kick back on. It's a slow come-back-on and an instant-off when they do do that. The, I think, the LED lights, they are brighter. I mean, look at the cars it's got them. I think it'd be absolutely the best move for the city to, for council to do that. The, you know, I know years ago, and I don't know if the kids has figured it out, but if you kick that pole hard enough, knock that light out, not lock, knock it out, but turn it off for 15 minutes or so, and then it gradually will come back on. The LED lights, you can kick that pole all day long, that light ain't going out until electric's cut unless you hit it with a truck or knock it down or something. I mean, magic will break it down. But I think the LED would be a smart move on council's part to do that.
I would just like to add, there is currently, what you see out in some of these Cobra lights are white light. Those are original mercury vapor. They started switching out the high-pressure sodium, which is yellow. So, you notice our city's kind of a mixed white-yellow. And then LED almost, I wouldn't say comes all in one color, but there's, LEDs here to stay for a while. They're not going to be coming out with something else where we'll have white LED, and then now some new conangled thing coming out. So, this will help be more uniformity, for sure.
And then I want also counsel to think about this, too. I mean, at some point in time, I think this is going to be mandated. At some point in time, there are, he approached me last year, but it wasn't so much of a, he wanted us to pay more of it. This year, he came back with a much more palatable fee figure. But also, too, but page six should give you a warning that they are starting to impose that one-time 5% fee. At some point in time, they're going to force people to change out to LED. It's cheaper on them. It's cheaper on whoever they service with. You're replacing bulbs at a last rate, so it makes sense to me. But since it's tied to that contract as a checkbox, I need to get council's opinion on it because we either have to approve the contract with checking that box or approve the contract and not do the project. So, I just want to make sure that council understands that. On December 2nd, we're going to have to have, we're going to probably have an answer.
What's the, Mr. Kiko, I don't know if you are aware of this, like, what's the, I mean, LEDs do fail. I mean, my whole house is LED, and every now and again, one will go after being in there for, you know, maybe a year. What's the cost to replace one when it, you know, ballpark? I mean, are they really expensive to outright buy when you need to replace it?
We just did our water plant here not too long ago. We converted from 400-watt high-pressure sodium to, I believe it was 100 or 120-watt LED, and I think each fixture was close to 100 bucks each.
Okay.
The other bulbs were only like 20 bucks. But they're supposed, they're on-off instantly. There's no heat. There's no, I mean, so-
I remember years ago, you used to say that, you know, because I was real interested in these years ago, but you said at the time, you know, which LEDs were a lot newer, the heat, the lack of heat was a problem in the wintertime because the snow would just sit and it wouldn't melt off. It would just cover up the light. Any updates and changes with how that works now?
Yeah. Mostly like the, when the traffic signals come in, yeah, those, some of them they'll have heaters in, or the units themselves produce enough heat to keep that off. But commercial LEDs are definitely come way farther than residential LEDs that you even find at Lowe's or Home Depot. Their burn times are supposedly, they just, they can't test it that long. Obviously, they haven't been out that long.
Right. All right. Council, any other questions for feedback or comments?
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Sure. Can I go on to the next section, sir?
Yes, sir. Let's get in.
All right. So, the capital improvement plan. Thanks for everyone for showing up tonight. This is, I want to stress, this is the absolute first step in the overall budget process. We have to do this before we start looking at our, submit to council our 2020 operating budget. So, this plan will be amended, you know? So, at the last meeting, some council members were inquiring about our budget being done at the first to be ready to go. And our finance director did an excellent job as explaining as to why at times that's tough because we don't have, we don't carry over millions of dollars like a Beaver Creek does or a Tip City does, you know? So, when you have surplus funds in these accounts, it's very easy to go ahead and do your budget for the next year because you'll have that reserved to help kind of pick up for it. Our funds don't have that. So, it's tough for us to do our budget for beginning of the year because we don't know how it's going to close. So, this plan, as we've done in the year past, this meeting is just, it's a formality in a sense. It's a good time to get together and give you what we truly need. But of course, this will be amended once our final numbers come in for 2020, and then we know how much proposed revenue we have coming in for 2020. So, with that being said, we can start off. I don't know how mayor wants to run the meeting, if you just want me to take it and be done?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say we just go, you know, go down each page and, you know, we'll just have you go through it. And if anyone has any questions, we'll just address them.
Okay.
And everyone, just like you said, keep in mind, this is the first step, so that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's not spend two hours on one thing.
Yep.
One thing on this CIP, as it's been in years past, we have to do this because of law, but everything in here is going to be changed when we find out what the budget is, once the financial director actually tells us how much money we have in all these funds and what the, what the general fund has. So, the, this is basically a rough draft of what it's going to be at some point next year after March.
Sure.
Because the budget won't even get done till March and discussed and passed because it has to be to the auditor by the, I believe, March 31st. And then at that point, this will be revisited and things will be cut or added or whatnot.
Sure.
That's the way it's always been in the past.
Absolutely. And that's the same game plan we're going now. So, page, the first page on there, minus the cover page, is just an overview of all the capital expenses department-wide. So, that's just really just a dollar amount overview. Really doesn't give any figures as to what those numbers mean as far as what they're purchased for, just a department total. So, we start on page two. We'll start with city council capital expenses. I don't know how council feels about this. I was up kind of doing it. I just put $6,000 in there. Again, we can entertain it more when we talk about the operating budget, but that is for technology upgrades across the board for you guys, whether it be refurbished iPads. I think last year, the year before, I got a quote for new iPads. It was high.
Yeah.
But I can get a refurbished, I got, personally just got a refurbished 12.9-inch iPad Pro. It was like three years old for $399. You know, so there's ways we can get technology into council to where we don't have to worry about spending money on printing out papers. You guys have a tablet. It's preloaded. I email it to you. You open it up. It's boom right there. You know, if you're going out away and you need to take that with you, you need to access your email, it can also be put on there. What I do need to look at is we have an agreement now with the bridge group to monitor all our stuff because in the city riverside, some municipalities are getting hacked by hackers, and they go and they basically hold your stuff a ransom. We don't want that to happen because it's very costly to get out of it, you know? So, this technology update with you guys is also going to result in an increased fee for monitoring those and protecting those on a monthly basis. So, but I did want to put it in there. I do want council to think about that over the next two months, but I am an advocate of finally getting you guys tablets, some sort of technology that we don't have to worry about the paper process because we do spend money on paper. So, any questions on city council? Anything you'd like to see added or taken away?
Counsel? Anyone?
Mrs. Grimm? Mr. Grimm, sorry. That Gale thing's on my head still. I'm so sorry.
Gale?
Mr. Grimm?
I did.
I did? Okay. Sure. Mrs. Agleson? I want to leave you out. Mrs. Howard? Okay. City manager capital expenses, this is for me. Office furniture. Anytime that you see a mention of office furniture in this thing, I want council to realize something. We did that for a purpose. We don't want the new renovations to include the furniture for multiple reasons. One, we want to be able to have a more say in what we get. But if we put that part of the bids package, it's going to be up, it's going to be marked up by 20, 25%.
Oh, yeah.
So, there's a reason why when we see office furniture in there, it's actually ultimately to save us money. We need, we need furniture for the new building, obviously, but we don't want to pay any extra than what we really need to for that. So, for me, $7,000, I'm telling you right now, I'm not going to use that. It is in there. It's something, once we get closer to the budget, we can drop out. I plan on taking my desks that I have in my office now. I love it. It's a $300 desk I got from Ikea. I can stand up at it. I can roll it down to sit up at it. I may get, maybe a small table or something and some filing cabinets. But I don't see myself going out this year and buying a whole new system, like a cherry oak wood system. So, that's why the $7,000 is in there. I do have in 2024, $3,500 set away, again, for a technology update, which is going to be a desktop computer or a laptop. I got my Mac, I think, last year, the year before. It's still going strong. I don't see that going down, but I may want to get a desktop in a few years. Some questions?
Mr. Bridge, does this include, I know, I remember seeing it last year, does this expense also, does this line also include fuel for you when you are out driving for city purposes?
It is not. The fuel's not a capital expense, but that is a line item in the actual budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for the lookout. All right. If we're done with page two, we can go on to page three. This is the finance capital expense, and this is Debbie's capital expenses, what she feels she will need. I do want to point out the software support. We have yearly, have always paid X amount of dollars to our, from SSI for software support. It's a yearly maintenance thing that they get for making their calls and supporting the software from the back. Before we updated, it was around 21, 22, but we never put it in for a capital expense. I think Debbie did the right thing this year by putting in as a capital expense, just to show council that every year we have to pay, it's fee agreement for that software that we do have. And that is about $28,000 a year. We also have the capital asset tracking. This is something that we absolutely need to start. That is something that we get dinged on every year for audits, and it's about time that we started going forward and making corrections on that. So, I do want people to understand that below these numbers, there clearly is an expense description. So, if you have any questions on any of those descriptions, please let us know as well. Network server protection, that is what I just told, discussed with everyone about the cities, municipalities being hacked, and we have a contract in place with the bridge group to, for them to monitor and to protect our technology. So, that will also have to be expended as a capital expense. Debbie does have $35,000 in there for furniture for the new city building, but Debbie also has quite a few staff members that do report to her, and that would be the tax department. That would be our account payable. That would be our water utility clerk, accounts payable. So, if she's looking at four or five offices right off the bat, then we're going to have to put some furniture in. Again, we did not want that part of the bid package because we didn't want to pay any more than what we actually have. Doesn't mean we're going to spend that $35,000. I think in the next couple of months, Debbie's going to really sit down, now that we have the final measurements of the office spaces, that we can go and kind of get a better idea of what they can get that's going to fit in those spaces. So, that number probably will be amended once we have further information going on. But I did want to put a placeholder in there to let council know this, that we will have to have purchase of furniture for the finance department. Computer replacements. Their computers have not been updated for quite some time now. We do need to upgrade those to at least something that has Windows 10 in it because the Windows 7 is not being serviced much longer.
January.
January, is what it is.
January.
So, we need to protect that computer and upgrade all those finance computers to something with Windows 10.
Are these going to be standalone computer units?
Desktops.
Okay. But are we going to a master computer that everybody's computer will feed into?
A server.
Oh, a server. Oh, a server. Yeah, we already have that. That's not, that's fine. We, that's fine. We're not getting one new. These are just like your office, like the computer they work on in the daily. That's what it is.
We just got the server not too long ago, didn't we? Within a couple of years, I think.
Yeah. That's awesome. Because we share files on that all the time. Yep.
Then the laptops will be connected to the servers, correct?
Some are, some are not. Like your guys' council, they went up-
No. I mean, the city offices will be connected to the server.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. They are now. And that's where like I have, like I put my permit, like all the permits that are issued in the city, staff member had recommended I put it on the server so someone, anyone can access that. Someone comes in, I don't know what my permit number is, they can access that. And I'll put the legislation on there. So, if I'm not in and Debbie needs to know when legislation is passed, you can access it there. So, it's made, it's made it quite a good difference for us having that server there. Printer purchase. We will have, we have a big printer that we pay a monthly maintenance fee on. It's in our hallway when you walk in a building now. That's going to be at some location at the new city building, but we're going to need another one. We don't want, we just want a-
A desktop.
A desktop professional-grade printer. I don't want anything that's going to have to have a contract or maintenance on it or anything like that. We just want something. They make these professional desktop-
For $3,000, you can buy probably 10 of them over at the office max.
But we need to make sure it has the fax capabilities and all that stuff.
And all that stuff.
Yeah. Again, we just wanted to place a holder in there to let you guys know what-
For a small office, they're rated at 20 or 25,000 sheets a month.
Or something like that, yeah.
And everybody could have their own printer, their own reddit, right? For $3,000.
Well, we're not doing that. Like I said, we just need to make sure that we have one central one on that second or first floor that people can fax out of or, because we have, I have an individual printer in my rooms, a little HP81, you know? But I can't fax it to that. I can't scan and send a thing off. That's another thing we do. We scan a lot of documents and we send them off to people. So, we need to make sure it has that capability as well. But again, I don't want to get into something. We don't need a massive one like we already have in the city building. That's X amount of dollars a month, and we got to pay maintenance on it, you know? So, something we'll look into, we might have to streamline that price a little more. So, I think we can get a printer for $3,000, but-
I think, I think it'll be down around the $1,000 range.
And Epsom workforce is $299 right now, and they have been for several years.
Well, I kind of, I know what you're talking about. I want to go a little bit higher than that.
It's a small business printer.
Yeah.
It has all the capabilities.
If we find one under $2,100, which is our capital purchase threshold, that will just be coming off completely because it's not considered a capital purchase if it's under X amount of dollars. But if it is over that, well, we'll do some more research on it. I just wanted to place a holder in there, let you guys know that we're going to be getting some sort of decent printer, a second one. Any questions on finance?
No, sir.
No?
No.
And then we'll move on to planning. Page four, office at Duke Furniture Building. We have on the second floor, we have some cubicles being built out. I think I told the council this, maybe it's last meeting. On the second floor in the right, depending on what side you walk in, one side of the building, it's supposed to be the west side. We had cubicles being built for the planning department. Well, it was later determined through a meeting with them that we can actually omit that from the plans and save a lot of money and then buy what we want à la carte afterwards. So, I did find a company down, there's one in Dayton, one in Cincinnati. They have a three-system, used one for about $16,000. So, I'm going to contemplate even taking that down to a two-system opposed to a three. But again, I did not, anything that I could take out of that bid proposal and us do it ourselves, I pretty much did. So, that's what that is. We will still need some, some office furniture for the planning department on the second floor. ArcGIS software, we wanted to get that last year. I mean, I didn't put enough money and I didn't realize how expensive that had shot up. I know what I worked on at grad schools, like maybe 1,200 bucks you can get a subscription. Well, you can't do that anymore. It's a lot more expensive. I will be advocating to hire a full-time city planner next year. I got to take some load off me, and I think that we're doing a disservice by not having one. If we hire a city planner that can be more of a planning director title, that's what we call it, that you can do the city planners, economic development, and I'll talk to businesses, go into accounting, talk to businesses, manage our code enforcement program. Any city planners that want to come here, we're going to need ArcGIS software. At that point in time, we can create our own city maps. We can map our underground utilities. We can map fire hydrants, even though we have one. But that's the kind of stuff. If you look at that zoning map right there, that's what the ArcGIS software does. It's a mapping software that allows the community to make their own maps. That is a subscription. I put a $2,000 in 2024 for any kind of upgrades that they would charge us for, because we won't upgrade it for three years. So, at some point in time, we'll have to see if we have to upgrade it. That's why there's money in there for 2024. Where is this? Sorry. Any questions on the planning side?
Just one real quick one. I mean, it's kind of a dumb question, but Mr. Kiko, I mean, with that, being able to lay stuff like that out, the utilities and stuff with that program, I'm assuming that would help you out a lot, right?
Yes.
A lot of our law.
Huh?
A lot of our law.
Because they use our AccuGlobe, but we're not having that. Accu, it's a competitor. They're competitive with each other. ArcGIS is far more superior. The county uses AccuGlobe and kind of-
All time around for young people.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Sure.
Counsel, any other questions? All right.
No.
Page five.
All right. Moving on. This is the parks capital expense. Shelterhouse additions upgrade, that is something that we took out. I still think that council needs to upgrade that shelter house, especially if you're going to continue with anyone having meetings there. I think last year was 50 up additional 10. Actually, I knew though, there's talk about increasing the acoustics and then doing some parking improvements on the outside. Again, just because there's $60,000 in there doesn't mean we're going to use it all, but it is something that we do want to place market. I do think that's still high on council's priority list, but you guys graciously took that out to allow us to buy new vehicles for employees. And thank you for putting their safety first, because that probably was the right thing to do, but we still need to address the shelter house.
What about a whiteboard and the projector that we could tie laptops into and possibly give the audience a little bit better idea of what we're going through?
Sure. That, something we'll look into if we can get that system, like a smart board or something like that for under the $2,100. It wouldn't be considered a capital purchase. We can include it in the shelter house additions and upgrades. I don't see why you couldn't. But we'd have to change the definitions on that. If you look at the bottom, I don't have the smart board on there and technology upgrades, but if we want to include that in there, I just add technology upgrades to that definition line item?
I think it should be-
Now, let me ask you this. Do you want that to be a separate line item on the CIP? Or do you want it just included in the upgrades in addition?
It doesn't make me any difference as long as we know what we're talking about.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, I'm fine with leaving it in with the upgrades. I mean, yeah, I mean, I think it's actually a good idea.
Just keep it in and adding to the definition.
Yeah. Are we talking about the floor? Are we talking about a, an epoxy coating or one of those other type of floors? I'm trying to think of the name of it. One that looks Are we talking about the floor? Are we talking about a, an epoxy coating, or one of those other type of floors? I'm trying to think of the name of it. One that looks like stone.
Yeah.
Now, then we had a guy come in, and he gave us the sample, which I still have in my office.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know if you need it. But that's up to.
It's got to be leveled out. Is there any kind of off?
Yeah.
Not level a little bit?
We'll probably have the company that did the concession stand in, or I'm sorry, the pool building this year, the restrooms that we had done. The company here in New Coralisle had done those. I can't remember if that's who you had.
Up off Brubaker.
Garage cans.
Yeah, that's what it was. Yeah. Another thing we need, because I also remember talking about this now, now I think about it, is depending on how those acoustical panels play out, we need, may need to add carpeting to the floor.
Yeah, I don't know if carpeting would be a good idea.
I'm just saying, if we're going to expand a couple thousand dollars on acoustical panels, and they're not doing any good because of the cement floor, there's no point of buying the $2,000, $3,000 with the acoustical panels. I'm just saying, if we go in and we are prepared to put the acoustical panels up, and they don't make much of a difference, the next option is to carpet the floor.
Is that where you suggested the carpet squares?
Yeah.
Because, you know, we have food in there and.
And you just rip a square up and you replace it.
Yeah. And I don't know how that would look, but I
Weird.
I wouldn't be much for carpeting. Plus, we could find something that we can hose down.
I need to say, you can get good quality industri, well, not industrial, what is it, commercial?
Yeah, it's commercial.
Going by the indoor or outdoor?
But you still go to restaurants and stuff, and it looks terrible.
With this room, if you look around everything, and here's a hard surface, except for the curtains and these acoustical tiles. So this is basically similar setup to the shelter house, only not in size. But you can tell, I mean, these are considered, they call it drop ceiling, but they're acoustical. They absorb sound, and then you only got three curtains. So I think with what we want to do with those panels, I think they will help a lot. And this is hardwood floor, and we don't get much echo in here at all.
Yeah. Well, the also, the new audio system that they're using to record is a whole lot better now, too. The YouTube sound is way better than what it used.
The concern for me was not so much the, we have speakers for that, and that's always been the problem, it was the people sitting in the office and hear. And Mr. Kiko brought up a good point, but to play devil's advocate, the ceilings in the shelter house are way taller.
Oh, yeah.
And they're arched like this, so it's going to encompass and keep that sound up there. It's going to bounce back up. But we are trying to get the low-level acoustical panels that kind of go in between the lights, which may include. But here's what I'm just saying to council. I mean, if we're going to spend X amount of dollars on these acoustical panels, it may or may not work. So that's a gamble you, we're going to have to take. And if we put these things up to the best of our ability, and it really doesn't make much of a difference, how are we going to address the floor situation?
Are you planning on putting a drop ceiling in the shelter house there?
No, no. The acoustical panels, I looked at, they hang down, and they sit almost parallel to the lights, but they're still going to be open spots.
Do you know anybody that uses those now?
Oh, I mean.
I was just curious how they work, the panels.
To me, honestly, the way we're, they're similar type buildings, but I still think the shelter house is bigger than this place. I think the makeup of the walls are completely different. I think that the ceilings are different. So we just got to prepare to go above and beyond if we spend all this money on acoustical panels, and it doesn't make that much of a difference.
I'm sure we could probably find someone local in the Dayton or, you know, at least from Columbus or Cincinnati if need, that could give us some consulting and tell us what will and will not work. I'm assuming there's people that are professional that can tell us that.
Yeah. Well, another thing we too, another thing we talked about with him and the Bridge Group when they were there is putting a thick fabric curtain essentially behind you guys. So it'd cover up the fireplace and all that stuff. It would help keep that sound
From bouncing.
Here. So if it's the high Mr. Cook and Cobb over there by, by Ms. Eagleson, it could bounce back and be a lot easier. So maybe we'll look at the acoustical panels as a mixture of the panels and then the curtain. That's the best we can do. So it doesn't sound like, and I, I'm on the fence about the carpet in the shelter house. I think it would make, take the aura away from being a shelter house.
A long cabin.
Yeah. And then you got maintenance issues you got to deal with. And then we don't know how long, much longer council's going to be there. I mean, from a rent, let's rent this place for a party type situation, I think it's perfect. It's just not good for what we do.
Right.
So we'll leave it in there. We can just add it, I can add technology upgrades to that definition. Is everyone okay with that?
Everyone good? Mr. Cobb, you okay with that, Mr. Cobb?
We've added technology upgrades to that definition?
I'm against everything in here. I'll tell you that right now.
Everything. The whole CIP?
The whole CIP, I'm against.
Why would you be against the whole CIP?
You're in, you're in here wanting to spend money.
Okay.
All right.
You're getting all wild on, on, on office equipment. You're already at 40 some thousand in office equipment.
That doesn't mean we're going to spend it, though. It's in here.
Well, I can't, I can't agree with it, and I won't agree with it.
I don't understand why you don't think the city should pass a CIP plan. That's part one. It's a charter requirement and financing.
Well, I understand that, but we're getting too wild here.
How you expect, okay. Well, that, I respect your opinion. I mean, I respect your opinion.
All right. Okay. Do you just want to finish going down that list?
Yeah. Playground fall equipment, $15,000. The grant money that we, we've got for the past couple of years, I think is, this is the last year ran on it, 19. I did order some swing sets. I have not gotten any verification, so I'll probably updating council on that on the 18th or on the 2nd, once they actually get verification. But the grant system that we had is, is probably not going to come back. Now, with that being said, I am open to slashing that for a couple of years, because we've been really aggressive the past three or four years of upgrading our parks. I still want to get the bike extra try stops, but lesson learned, they are not cheap. I had $10,000 put back for a couple. I would, I got to put way more than that back, because these units are, are not, not, not cheap. So again, I am open to taking some of that out. However, council wants to move the city forward when, when their parks and rec department is really your guys' decision. At least wanted to put some money in there for placeholders, because we have gotten fantastic feedback for, for the improvements we've done at the parks. So I kind of wouldn't want, if I had to choose between the exercise stops and the playground equipment, I'd rather have the playground equipment and kind of shoot for the exercise stops, maybe, you know, a couple of years down the road.
Right.
But again, that would be council's decision, how you guys want to move forward with that.
While, while we're on that item, what is the, I'll see this. What's the condition of the truck? You've got that truck way out there in, what, 24?
Does that need to be moved up to Greg's truck?
No, we're already, that's one we're getting ready to purchase now, and then.
So Ron's truck essentially. We're getting ready to buy a truck for Ron and one for cemetery.
Yeah, and part of it, I think.
So what is, what kind, what kind of condition is Greg's truck in that he drives?
The one Greg drives is pickup is being replaced. It's being replaced here ASAP. Ron's truck is being here replaced ASAP. So then this park truck will be part of the one.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Because Greg's truck's out of the cemetery.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
He uses it for both.
Okay. So is there any vehicles in the fleet in the parks that Park Specific uses that needs to have a truck prior to 2022?
I mean, it's sitting out at 2024. Who knows where we'll be in for five years? But it, you know, if we get in there, and our vehicles are still in excellent condition, because the new one we're getting here at the end of 19, that could potentially end up going to 25 or 26. It just, we also have another truck that we use for the parks. It's not a sole purpose, but it could be someday that dump truck, you know, needs a proportion of it covered, because we use our vehicles through various departments.
Gotcha. So here will be some debate for some council?
While we're on that, what, what is this utility cart you've got 20 grand in there for?
Basically, that is the, the, like the John Deere Gators. We now have a Kubota one, and we utilize that to get through the park for getting a blower around. Just, it's park work, and then sometimes we'll take it out to cemetery to get in between gravestones, because our dump truck don't whole fit in between the old section of gravestones. But I think in the description, but that's what that one is. I think the last one we got was right around 17, 18,000. The one we got now, I think we got it almost 10 years ago.
Okay, so basically, we've got what, two Gators?
We have two Gators and a Kubota one that's at the cemetery.
And you're planning on replacing one of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, one of the Gators that was the parks is from the 90s.
They're.
Early, well, you guys use it for the heritage.
They're rough. I, I can, they're, they're, yeah.
Are they absolute operating necessity?
That I don't know.
They use it for getting around the, the plants. Yeah, I mean, absolute, I would say no, but you're close.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll have to leave that for discussion purposes. Something that, we have, let's see, the parks is paid out of the general fund. So this is one of the line items. Anytime you see a fund number 101 dot 1800, or anything that begins with 101, that's out of the general fund. So it's really depending on how the general fund does. If this was like a street only purchase, and it come out of the street funds and stuff like that. So we'll keep it as an item of discussion. Maybe move back a year, and we may move that truck purchase up. But we do have placeholders in there for that. We have a wood chipper on there for 17,500 and a $12,000 mower. Wood chipper, looks like it's going to be split with 201, and then the mower is just going to be for the parks.
A wood chipper, it gets, no, that's separate. I was thinking, it's not, that's not the same machine that can be used for the leaves, is it?
Correct. No, it's different.
Okay.
And this wood chipper's been rebuilt on basically one and a half times. It was a full rebuild way back when we did a community cleanup. It blew up. We rebuilt it again here five years ago or so. And as much tree work as we've been doing, we're, we can rent one, and if we have a project we're doing, renting is not a bad thing. But we do so much of our own park tree work, path work, cemetery, everywhere.
Yeah.
It, it might be good to start looking at a chipper, because we also do some brush pickup. Some we chip, some we go take the claim shell with the backhoe and go grab it and do it that way.
Good.
Would this be a new chipper or used?
Um, it could, it could be either or. If we find a good Vermeer that, you know, it, it's hard to tell out there. Some company may have went in, two years later, they went upside down, and you, we might find a good deal.
Vermeer, if, I understand other people talking, it's probably the best one in the market, correct?
It's, it's one of the best out there, yes.
What is it called?
Vermeer. V E R N E R.
V E N.
It's V E R M E E R.
Say that one more time.
That's your top line.
V E R M E E R. I think that's not a.
Vermeer or something like that. Okay. So my notes, I put utility cart necessity question mark. We'll have to get to that when we get down there. And then, anything else on here that you guys want to see moved around, omitted, or added? And like I said, we, I just want everyone on the same page tonight, because when I introduced this resolution on Monday, it's actual and final form, you know? So I, all these numbers, unless we change them, but it's one resolution, one read, you vote on it. So I need to make sure everyone's on the same page. And when you see the final resolution, there's going to be a lot more professionalism. I'll put my charts near and stuff like that. We just got to make sure everyone's on the same page. I don't want any issues when we actually go to introduce and vote on it on Monday.
What type of trailer are you looking at, Howard? Is it a mobility trailer, or cargo trailer, or what?
It would be an under wheel well trailer, something that we can haul, not the big backhoe, but the small backhoe and haul some equipment with.
Okay. And didn't we just buy a mower for?
It was in the 19 budget. We could not find the six-foot deck version of what we wanted. So we moved it, and we're getting a head start to get one ordered for 2020 to get, and both of our parks mowers are five-foot decks. We want to get those to six-foot and get out there and be able to mow more per swipe than what we're doing now.
So the money from 19 is basically what you're moving to 20?
In theory, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions with the parks?
Counsel, any other questions?
Scrap it. The whole thing? The whole thing?
All right, page six.
Plans and buildings. So I don't know how much the bid prices are going, I mean, the bids are going to come back in for renovation. I know when he's here before he took council chambers out, it was about 4, 450. We did take councils and chambers out. I don't know what the bid specs are going to be. I do think they're going to be significantly lower than the 430. But again, I want to have something in there that we don't have to go and amend it once it's back in. Just because it says 430, I, you remarked it only for renovation of the city building, and then the furniture is separate. So basically, that purchase, renovation is to actual accept the bids and renovate the building.
Question. What was our bid price, or what was the last price we had for tearing down the old school building?
Offers of $200,000 or something like that?
It was between two or three, I think.
That was years ago. We're going to look at, put something in there for that, because I don't know if we'll be able to afford tearing that building down.
What, what if you were to reduce this renovation? Well, leave the renovation as in. Take 200 of that money, and then float the bonds for the.
What's left over that's needed.
For the city building.
Saying taking 230 out of the 430?
Yeah, take 300, whatever it's going to be to take that building down.
I like the fact that council's being aggressive with trying to get that building down, but I don't think the new city buildings would suffer because that school building's still up. Am I correct?
We're not, we're not, we're not, and we're talking at that point, then, if you, let's say you take 300. So now you got 130 left. So that means if you turn around and take $300 and float the bonds, or take a loan on that city building, and get it done. I think we're going to possibly present a better picture of what we're doing to the citizens by virtue of putting that much cash into the city building.
See what he's saying? Basically, finance some of the, some of the total, like just for conversation's sake, if it's, you know, 450,000, finance 250 or 300 of that, and then use that, put some of it towards tearing down the school.
That, that's council's technical decision.
You know, if we, if we keep tossing that school around, we're never going to get it down.
Right. Did we ever, not to change your subject drastically, but did we ever, was, was that a done deal with the gentleman who offered the, the, you know, we'll tear it down for X amount if we get the land? Was that squash?
That was, that was kind of.
He takes the land, we don't get the land.
He took the land.
And we pay him 300,000.
Yeah, that was not a, I don't think.
Yeah, that wasn't a good deal for the city.
Now, I know the land bank is going to be up and going again. I know that's something they would want to do that on. I think if we put money back to tear it down, because here, we can always add a line item to tear that school down. We'll have to see how the general fund plays out. You know, we'll say, oh, close. My goal is to not finance anything for the renovation of the city building.
I, I understand.
That, that is my, that's my goal. I'm not saying we can do that, but I brought up last meeting, we, as a, one of our cell towers releases, they're interested in selling that, the, make it out of perpetual lease. What that means is we don't get the monthly rent from it, we'll get a check for 230,000.
Right.
You know? So, but we lose about 12,000 a year out of the general fund because of the monthly receipt.
It's a steady stream of money, which is nice.
Now, now, I talked to her, because I said, listen, I don't think this technology's going anywhere anytime soon. She's like, I agree with you, but the problem is, what we're seeing now, all these carries are combined.
Right. They're all sharing each other's towers.
Yeah, they're all sharing. So he, she's like, the moment that that tower's not profitable then, they can end that lease that we have any given time.
Yeah.
So it's almost a, and I'm still on the fence about it. Yeah, I, I truly am, because, yeah, we're taking monthly revenue out of the general fund permanently for having a 230,000 check given to us. So it's just like.
And the question is, how much longer are cell towers?
That's the thing. So it's just like, do you just cut out now and take the money? Because you don't, five years down the road? I don't think it's going to be five years. But, I mean, our lease currently, lease goes like 2032 or something like that.
Right.
When they want to extend it. So, you know? But they want to extend it, so, you know?
Technology is always changing.
So we get twelve grand a month?
A year, a year, a year.
And they would pay how much?
That, that, that monthly revenue would go away, so the yearly twelve grand would go away.
And they would pay a...
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
How much?
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Well, that's what they offered right now.
Oh, it'd take about twenty-six years to get a, to see them right now, to have an actual...
I'll be in twenty fifty.
You know, I mean, it is what, so I like it, I don't make, I can't make that decision. I can only gather the information and give it to council and the council make that.
Is that negotiable at all, that price, or is it?
You know, I picked her brain about it because I was trying to get it done soon, but it's actually about a four or five month process because they have to go through underwriting, they all kind of stuff, they'll do on their end. The number she gave me, she said was pretty aggressive. Of course, we'll go back and say we want three hundred, they probably won't budget two thirty. But what they probably offer to give this is...
I'd go back at two fifty and we'll get it.
I mean, we'll try to counter.
I mean, it's only twenty grand and if they can get rid of the tower, they would do that, I think. But back on the city building, I think the, if the general fund can handle this expense, that building should be bought and paid for with no loans on it. The, if you want to borrow money, which apparently they do, borrow the money to tear down Madison Street School with.
I agree.
All right, you want to do it.
But I'm not, I'm not even for, but I'm not going to be here, so it doesn't matter what I say. But I don't think, you know, borrowing money, if we can afford to do it and possibly get money from the...
Land bank?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
To, to do it, we should have done it last time. It didn't happen. If we get the money from the land bank this time, council, somebody ought to make the motion that that money goes to rip down Madison Street School and get that ISO out of this city. And if this city building don't get done, we're going to have two ISOs in this city. And one of them's going to be right downtown.
I've got a question, a stupid question probably, but what is a land bank?
A land bank is a, is a, is a government, quasi-government agency. It's done out of the county where they go and they get dilapidated structures, underperforming issues and they either...
It's fire.
They renovate them just to make them more pretty done.
They made an offer to us for Madison?
No.
They, go ahead.
No, I think in...
The streets.
Twenty sixteen, I had, was it twenty sixteen? CDVG was that? There they are. I had worked with Tom, how me and Mr. Kiko did, and got a block grant money. I mean, CDVG money that we usually do to do our repairs that are in low to moderate income areas. I had that school turned, torn down, a hundred percent funded, whole nine yards. I think there's a little bit that we had...
What school?
The Madison Street School. They're going to use block grant funds. Part of that program is you can leave the blank from it. So we're using that avenue. But the council at that point in time voted against that and wanted to fix, I think, a little, little thing of prints, prints. So we did, we, one of my first things I got of city manager was to get that school down. And we worked to get it down. We had to secure it, but again, council wanted to go a different direction with the money. Now, I did have that conversation with the new administrator up there and he says that's still not, not completely out of the question. Now, what we have to also understand with that is if we elect to take that block grant money and use it on the school, we're not getting any block grant money for anything else. Probably that year, that's every three years they...
Every other.
Every other year. So we're going to be losing some money, but then we can use some of our street levy money to maybe end some, because the street's going to have a little bit of extra revenue coming in because of gas tax. Two hundred thousand dollars, please step, please step in if I can misquote, do another shave and fade project we have there. As long as we keep projects going, doesn't mean we have to do a complete reconstruction, you know? If we get money again for the, tear down Madison Street School, I would highly recommend the city take advantage of that. Highly recommend it. Now, back to this, we can always amend this in the middle of the year. I hate doing that.
It's going to be amended anyway.
Well, I'm just saying, say June of next year, July next year, we have something come in and we have an opportunity to get it torn down, we can go in and fix it to make it happen.
Mr. Cobb?
Well, you want to know what I'm upset about. And I'm going to tell you right now, you bought a building.
I did buy a building. I bought a building at the direction of city council.
We bought, Mr. We bought a building.
I voted no on it, but...
Well, then you need to address it with them guys.
No, I'm going to address something to you because you didn't fully do your job.
Why, why didn't I do?
You bought, we bought, yes, I am on council and I got to accept. We bought a building that appraised at a hundred and fifteen and we spent a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Okay? Now, you would have, should have went in, now you find asbestos, you should have went in and done a, or hired somebody to do a, what do they call it, study? Huh? Study? No, I guess...
Inspector.
Inspector, yeah. Which would have found your...
Okay. Let me just add, let me comment on what you said. The appraised value, what the city bought for was actually a deal because we, he actually reduced price. The amount that was, people are talking about such as yourself, is how much the auditor appraised it has faced off. That's not the value of the building. That's the assessed value for taxing purposes. That does not in any way, shape or form dictate what the building should be sold for. Second point is, I did get asbestos already done, which is why we found out...
After you bought the building.
I would, did my job as the direction of the council. The council passed legislation for me to buy the building. I did as such, I did the other work after.
But you fed, you come in there when you...
Don't say me, sir.
Us. When you come in there, you took council in there, well, we're going to move council in this building. Then you turn around and went at a council meeting, well, we're not going to put council in there because it's going to cost us money.
No, 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 sir.
Now, I'm going to tell you, I would approve.
Okay, but I did not, I work at the direction of council, point blank period. I don't do anything without legislation for big purchases or big things like that without council approving.
I did approve it, but we did.
But they did.
But we did.
And I'm working at the direction of council. So, yeah, so...
And, and as far as that council not being there, council made the motion and approved that motion to take council chambers out of the new city building and keep it at the shelter house.
Sir, I'm just the middle man.
Council did, us seven or how many was at that time?
Three.
Six of us or whatever it was. All of us did that. He did what we told him to do.
I didn't tell him to buy it.
You're not the only one on council, Mr. Cobb. There was six of us or seven of us right now.
But if you also sit back and remember...
And if you say no, you've got six other people that says yes. It doesn't matter what you say, the majority runs...
You and the ex-mayor sit right in there in that council chambers and said, it doesn't matter what we all say, we're going to buy the building.
And council voted for it.
All right, Mr. Cobb, I'm...
The mayor and vice mayor could not buy a building because you don't even know what you're talking about half the time.
Excuse me.
Guys, guys, hold up, stop.
I know more, but what the hell you do?
Guys, stop, please stop.
You didn't know your business what I do.
Okay.
Or don't do.
Guys, cool down for me. Let's cool down.
Stare all you want.
Guys, stop.
I'm not afraid of you.
I ain't afraid of you either.
It's a good thing.
Okay.
Okay, stop. We'll, we'll just call the meeting right now.
That would probably be a good idea because he don't like anything in this thing.
Okay.
It's usually seem to talk about it.
Okay. But he is right, you know, Mr. Cobb, you know, and I understand you voted no. That's why there's seven of us. So we'll move forward and we'll keep going on tonight's agenda. When you're ready, Mr. Bridge. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Grimm.
There are numerous furnitures for new city buildings. Are those for different departments?
Yes.
Comes to eighty thousand dollars for furniture. Four, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for furniture, five hundred and ten, somewhere between four seventy-five, five hundred and ten.
Yeah, but it's not hard.
They could come down.
It could come down. It could come higher. We don't know. We don't know what the bids are going to say. I don't think that, the building renovation is probably, if I had to guess, and no one, anyone to hold me to this word, would probably about three, three fifty, if I had the best guess effort on what we're doing for there.
Right.
We need furniture for a new building. I don't want anyone to be shocked after there's furniture in there. That's why I gave the disclaimer as to why we broke it out. Because say if we put that money for the furniture back into the bid specs, now we're paying whatever they mark up on that furniture. I'll put furniture, it's not cheap. And we're going to try our best to save money. I mean, it's not like we're going to go out and buy Cadillacs of all new furniture, but clearly, I mean, if we're building a new building, common sense should tell you we're going to...
Furnish it.
You know? So we, we, we're doing the best we can with this project.
We're going to have somewhere between six and seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's not going to be cheap, but, I mean, we rent now, we have no space. We're, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I understand why council wanted to go through with the... I truly did.
Yeah. Can we back up on this a little bit?
Yeah, whatever you got.
Back on the city council expenditures? I don't know if it'd be under the CIP or a line item in the budget. There's been a lot of talk about the chairs at council.
Yeah.
You know, they all are nasty, especially the ones that council sits in.
We'll go at shelter house expense, wouldn't it?
Well, I don't, I don't know where that would be.
Land buildings.
Would that, pardon me?
If it ends in land and parks, is it under parks?
Isn't it under the shelter house renovation?
Yeah, it's probably under shelter house renovation. So let's go back to the previous page.
Yeah, I'm glad you remembered.
Shelter house renovation. So, am I adding technology to that definition?
Please.
Okay, so we can do that.
Or at least I would like it. I don't know what everyone else thinks.
I agree.
Which, are we on page two?
Page five, sir.
Five.
Five was the shelter house.
So, yeah, it's, it's actually included in the, if you look in the description, it says improved parking, equipped six floor tables, chairs, kitchenette addition, and rental steps. And again, just because it's listed there, doesn't mean we really have to get the kitchen in. Because I know that was still an area of debate among council members themselves, as to which we guys wanted to go with that.
Right.
So this draft, I kind of, it's fluid enough for us to allow, continue doing city business, but also allow for conversations to take place. But it is noted under the chairs because, yeah, they are...
Tables and chairs.
And we've been getting plans on this, so it's about time we did something.
Which page are we going?
We're on page six.
Okay.
So how are we going to, have we made it determined, Mr. Cook, about how we want to do that with the Madison School? Do you want me to add a whole new line item in there for the school? Do you want to wait till like, we get some more information with the county could be involved?
Is it hard to get a, I don't know, Mr. Kiko or Mr. Bridge, or getting an up, I mean, we've probably sung this a hundred times, updated price on what it is to just have someone come in and blow the thing up and haul it away?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, something we, we can do.
I mean, does that cost a lot of money to get something like that done, an estimate on that?
Oh, yeah, they're going to charge us.
Right, but I mean, is it, is it expensive?
You could probably get a, yeah, you could probably get an estimate for, for a demo of the Madison Street School negative.
They want it, yeah, we can get some updated estimates. Because a lot, the other thing that, now that we think about it, is we have thirty thousand dollars worth of abatement work in there. So is that something you guys want to go ahead and take care of?
Yes.
You know, so let's circle back that. We have the quote from the Leepie Enterprises that, remember, there's asbestos in the window frames and stuff?
Yeah.
Which is going to have to be removed.
Even if we blow it up?
Even if you blow it up.
I was, I was joking. Dynamite?
We have to get the stand rail with buckets to count.
Yeah.
We always earmark that because we bring this discussion back up down the road about demo legislation, getting a demo. We can bring that in because the demo person might just include that in their price potential.
Did you, Mr. Kiko, did you, I don't know if I misheard you, did you say that you could get someone, would that, they, they would charge us to giving us an estimate on that?
No, they won't charge us. And I got about three people that I know do demos in the area.
Oh, that's, okay.
Are they certified to do the demos with the asbestos, asbestos in it though?
I'm pretty sure. I know at least two of the, the three are.
Okay.
But don't we have an estimate or an estimate about around thirty thousand dollars to abate that?
Yeah, for the bait, the asbestos only, but that, that has nothing to do with demo position.
Well, I understand that. Why don't, I think council ought to go ahead with the abatement, get rid of the, the asbestos out of it. Then whoever comes in to demo it, because they don't have to mess with any asbestos in it, that bid might be a tad cheaper to have it taken down. Does that sound reasonable, Mr. Kiko?
It's very possible, and correctly from wrong, I think asbestos may be prevailing because it's over thirty, it's over twenty-five.
Yeah, seventy-five is a...
It's seventy-five. So, yeah, you could potentially have it removed and then you won't have to pay the markup with the general contractor. You hire a subcontractor to do it, which could be ten to fifteen percent.
So it could cost that way, it could cost us about fifty thousand, cost the city fifty thousand for assuming with the markups and stuff and the general contractor to have somebody else come in and do it.
Does the demolition fall under the seventy-five thousand category or the two hundred and thirty thousand category or the two fifty thousand?
I have to go back and look at, look at that.
Well, I was going to ask the, the opposite question to him. Would it be, I mean, I guess it could go either way. I was wondering if someone, if we said, hey, we want your company to demo it, but it's got some asbestos. If we pick you, will you give us a break on, on removing it?
You can't do that. It has to be bid it out.
Okay.
Because of the price, the overall price of the demo is going to be more than allocated amount.
All right.
So we, what that means is we can't go and say, hey, once the bid specs are in, we open it and we say, you're going to need a price.
No, I mean, but they write it in their price if it was...
Okay, yeah, when we do it beforehand, it's going to...
That's what I'm saying.
But don't they have, don't you have to take the, because it's a government entity, take the lowest bid?
It's the lowest and or best bid. When you evaluate the bids, it doesn't have to be the lowest.
So you could take a more expensive bid.
You can, depending on what their qualifications are, just different things.
Well, if it doesn't cost us anything, can't we get one each way?
You can get proposals, problem when you get proposals, they're given a pretty rough number. Because what they're gonna do is they know they're gonna possibly bid a bid participant. So when you go write your bid specs out and then you put it out for bid, then they know they got a number out there.
Right.
That's why when I do some of these proposals, I do not put them out in public because if I gotta go up with bid with them, I don't want to cut their throat. I'm putting in a good bid, so it depends on how much we could get a set of quick specs put together. And actually put it out for bid and possibly reject any and all bids and that. If someone's not willing to give us a, let's call it a tight proposal. Because I know someone who did a large project in there, it had asbestos removal, it was a private one. But I just want to make sure that these people that give me these possible estimates, you know, aren't putting a number out there that could shoot them in the foot later on.
Right.
But you can put the asbestos in as an alternate bid.
You can, you can put it as an alternate and accept or deny that as a alternate.
All right, okay.
Should we go ahead and at least put anything on there?
Put it in there.
For the, that's removal?
For asbestos?
Yes.
Okay, so I will add.
It's one step closer.
I mean, yeah, if it is there, great, if we don't use it.
And you have bids already on that, don't you?
Yeah, well, that doesn't have to be under the seventy-five thousand dollars threshold. I have a quote from Leepie Enterprises, it'll be stuff at the downtown building.
Well, could that go ahead and be done like this year yet or not?
We didn't account for it in the CIP.
Pardon me?
We didn't account for that for asbestos here.
So it'd have to be done next year?
He wouldn't be able to schedule that until after next year.
Right, we're only a little over a month away anyway, so.
What I'll do is I'll, what I'll do is add another title, like City Garage, I put Madison Street School. Well, I'm gonna put asbestos in there and I'm gonna put about a five thousand dollar cushion just in case, because that quote was from, I think, about six, seven months ago.
Yeah.
And then just in case there's any cushion there, would council mind if I put forty instead of thirty-five, then we're gonna use it. But I don't want to have to amend it if it, you know, and of course I'll be upfront, because anything over that twenty thousand is gonna require council approval for me to sign contract anymore.
Do you think forty thousand would do it? I mean, based on previous, you think that would do it?
Oh yeah, because like I said, he quoted seventy thirty, so I don't know if he does it next year, is he gonna raise it by two point five percent?
No, I'd say that.
I.
I would imagine it going up ten grand in six months, seven months, that's true.
Well, we don't know, the EP may change the laws with how you gotta bait the stuff and now he's got more, you know, more restrictive regulations. So, anyway, whatever dollar amount we put in there, council's gonna have to sign off on the agreement because it's over the twenty thousand dollar limit. So thirty-five, forty, what we think?
And I can only assume.
Or keep it at thirty?
I'm fine with thirty-five, thirty.
I'd rather do the forty and make sure.
I would too.
Because if you don't use it all, you know, we've heard the whole time, we don't have to come back and the money's there and then they can just, you know, leave it sit there till next year.
Forty.
Forty sounds good.
Sounds like everyone agrees.
Sounds good.
And if this, and we haven't, you haven't got to the budget yet, but this CIP and the budget when they are all finalized next year, I think that you have an excellent track record of not spending every dime that you have available to you. At least you haven't in the last five years, or, yeah, five years, that I'm aware of. The, and you didn't have control of the money before that, so.
No, no, I, yeah, good point. Any other questions on lands and buildings?
Nope.
Nope, all right, so we're moving on to police. Before we get started on police, I did request, Ben, who is, that does the contracts for the sheriff's office, since the levy passed and we thanked citizens for that. I do have two contracts coming, I have a contract for a man at four, I have a contract to add a fifth deputy. We add that fifth deputy, the county now has a program to where we can just basically rent a car from them, opposed to going out and buy them. A part of that, part of a program too is they pay for the gas, they pay for the maintenance, they pay for the, all the equipment and all that stuff that goes with that car. I have not seen those contracts yet, I'm still waiting on those. But council will have that decision if you guys want to go ahead and keep it at four, add a fifth. If we add a fifth, or you guys want to buy your own car outright, or you want to take advantage of their program. So basically, I'm telling you this, because of police fund, I really just threw some placeholders in there, because I don't know, one, how the contracts are gonna look out, how it'll look in the directions council wants to go.
Did they give you any indication how much it'd cost to rent the car for a month?
I think it's the yearly cost.
Okay.
And I wanna say it's about twelve to thirteen, but don't quote me on that. So that would cover the gas, the actual purchase of the car, the maintenance of the car, you know, lights, liability.
If it's only twelve thousand a year and they pay for everything else.
That's just the car.
That, yeah, that's the deal, that's the deal.
Well, it is, I mean.
And they cover the insurance too, or do we have to cover the insurance?
It's all them. And I'm waiting on your direction on that, so don't quote me on anything.
I mean, that's almost a no brainer, I would think.
Sure.
Can we rent fire equipment too?
So I think that's.
Manamam has a pull cart in his, in the park, they'll use it.
You don't have any horses though.
What I like about that car renting possibility, I'm kinda glad council's up to it, is, you know, we may add that fifth and, and we're hopefully put this on for permanent next year. But at the same time too, I don't mind having our own fleet, because I mean, we can rotate what we have and put them into other city cars. So it's still up in the air, because we haven't seen the contracts yet, but I do want to put a placeholder in there. Do you guys want to go ahead and earmark any money, so we don't have to go and amend this down the road? You want to go ahead and put in there for a new patrol vehicle?
I thought, I thought we had one coming, what, next year, I thought?
Did we just order one?
You put a, you put a.
I thought we had one be here about June or something.
No, they put it on, you put it on hold depending on.
Oh, that's right.
We need to put one in.
So we still got one for nineteen if we can get.
So let's add that in there for at least that one. So do we want to add?
Yeah, but, but the one that we put on hold was already in the, in the CIP for nineteen.
It's just gonna carry over.
We put it on hold, well, you should go ahead and order it, I think, I mean, that's my opinion. Because it won't get here till probably, what, May or June anyhow.
Yeah.
And buy it in, for the nineteen funds.
No, I told Howie to wait till the levy passed, so it's passed last week, you're a good point, we'll go ahead and get the one for nineteen.
So I would do that, and then, what's the oldest one we have, the ninety? I mean, a two thousand?
Twenty-ten Charger, that's the last old one.
So this new cruise, the new SUV will give us four?
Yeah, yeah.
Or would it give us five?
It would give us five.
Four new SUVs and a Charger.
Okay, then the Charger, I'd put one in here for probably twenty and get rid of that Charger. And order it at the end of twenty and have it come in in twenty-one.
He likes it, doesn't he?
Well, what I assume is.
That way we don't have two running back together.
This new one is going to replace the Charger now.
Right.
Well, he, he said if we put another cop on, we'd still need the five cars, and they like the Chargers, which I don't understand.
Another thing too, if we go ahead and rotate that out, and say they get a new SUV, we can use that Charger within, I mean, sir, we can use it for a administrative car. Or something just reused instead of going and buying a new car.
We could get it to the fire department, so the chief had a vehicle.
He has his own money, buddy.
Hang on, Ms. Hoffman, do you have something?
Yeah, but isn't that, oh, that's police fund.
He said no, he didn't want it.
Then what he was just saying a second ago.
Wrong answer.
If we, if we add a fifth deputy, will we have twenty-four-seven coverage?
I don't think it'd be exactly twenty-four-seven coverage, but it'd be close. If we add the six, it would be, but if they had six, it could come.
Well, how can we change it to get more coverage with the fifth? Because, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the other night when we had that horrible situation up at the rescue, the closest deputy was Donaldsville because that was a night we didn't have coverage.
The reason we didn't have coverage that night is our one deputy that would be normally working was on medical leave having a hernia surgery. If he would, if he would have been on his normal rotation duty, he would, there would have been a deputy on duty.
But shouldn't we have somebody cover him when he's not?
Now, the contract says he had to be out next amount of days before they.
They have to be out ten, ten days, I believe it is.
Yeah, we'll have to get into that in the, in the budget to figure out how we want to squeeze five or.
You guys can do six, but I think at that point in time, the general fund will have to supplement from that, and we'll just have to see what tax questions come on. We can, and we can, we can tell them, but they're unionized employees, so we can only do so much.
I mean, if we, if we want six deputies, they'll give us six.
Well, no.
But we gotta have, we gotta have the money to pay for it.
I mean, right now, it's about probably a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty thousand, not to interrupt, I'm sorry, but just for one deputy.
Yeah.
So we do.
But I wasn't suggesting a six, I was suggesting stretching it with the five.
Right.
Sure.
Just, what's everyone thinking about, I don't know if we want to get into details as far as the police still, the equipment. I know it's been talked about a few years back, car cameras.
That's up around you guys.
I think it's a good idea.
I would love to see them, I really would, but wasn't there, someone correct me if I'm wrong, there was an issue with getting the film, not actual film, obviously, but the video uploaded to their server or something like that? Because we don't have super high speed here at our.
I think we corrected that.
Well, I think that was fixed though.
Was it?
Yeah, at one time they had to take it over to the county.
Right.
But then we got a server or something here that I think the county paid for, the sheriff's office paid for, and with, with the internet service, it downloads here and it just shoots it over there now.
You want me to reach out and get a quote?
I, me personally, I would love to see it, I mean, I figure more eyes, the better.
Well, you are, they have, they have body cams.
Right.
And you have a cruiser cam.
Right.
And I wanted to say, and don't, anyone quote me on this, I know I'm saying that a lot, we had the discussion on it, so it's like fifteen, twenty thousand dollars I'd want to do this thing then.
I thought it was like thirty-six hundred per car.
Was it? I think by the time we had to do that.
No, they're, they're quite expensive, the cameras.
Well, let's just, you know, if you got, if you get time, find out what the ballpark price would be.
I mean, if you, if you got a digital camera, which I think they probably are now, because their body, their body cams are. You, you know, thirty, I would think thirty would be a little high, you might be able to get one for twenty-five, but you wouldn't want to buy, I don't think, a used one in that type of equipment either. I mean, it'd be like buying a used bullet vest.
Is somebody calling your own?
The.
Probably just call the lieutenant.
Up there?
They just, I think they just put, possibly put one in.
So, yeah, I mean, if, if you don't mind just getting us a, you know, little quota.
The car that we're getting promoted, you guys want to have the camera in it already?
The new one coming? I, I would think so, yeah.
Why not?
I mean.
My other question is, is the sheriff allowed to say yea or nay to that?
No.
There are cars.
There are cars, we can put whatever we want in them. And I think the, the, the car cameras, I know a lot of departments are getting away from probably because of the cost. But the, the camera, when you pull, when you, they turn those lights on, the camera comes on, it's the way they're wired. And they see everything before that car's ever stopped, what's happening. It also shows everything when that deputy's coming up, because that body cam's only gonna go so far.
And if it's on.
And, well, it, they usually turn them on soon, yes, sir.
If they're set up only for when the lights come on, most of the deputies, when they respond to anything in the city, their lights are not on.
The.
On a stop, yes.
On a stop is, is what the body cams are really, I think, more for, but if they, if they run, you know, if, if they turn the lights on, even here in the city, going to these, the fire runs and stuff, which they can, if they.
They can, but they don't, and for a deputy to turn on his emergency license in Clark County, he has to have the permission of his supervisor that's on duty.
Well, I tell you, well, let's, I mean, that's all the logistics of it, let's find out.
That would be something he could talk about.
Let's get some ballpark prices and we'll go from there.
You want to put anything to hold, a placeholder, or is that something you just want to look at, get some pricing, want to get some more information and possibly amend it down the road?
If you think you could do it for thirty thousand, just add thirty thousand in for the cameras.
That's what I'd rather do, because that, the police line item is pretty healthy.
What do you think? You want to put something in there now?
Yeah.
And, you know, if we don't use it, we don't use it.
We don't use it, we don't use it.
And another thing, do we have radar units in the cars or not, do you know? Do we, in all of them, or just like one or two?
I, I believe they're in all of them.
Okay, I was just curious, I didn't, I wouldn't know where.
Grab Shammy's name, please, it's throwing me off.
You think I'm Shammy?
Not at all.
So. So we can go ahead and, I think, and put it in now, and then go off of what kind of pricing we get.
Add it on there?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll add cruiser cams?
Right.
How much?
Thirty, I'd say. And well, let's go with forty, and then when he finds out what it is, that can be adjusted, and he can make that call tomorrow and find out. But if it's less than forty, I don't think council would have a problem with it.
Well, let's go ahead and decide on the number now, because I want to get this final version, so it's gonna be introduced on Monday.
Right, but he can make the phone call to the lieutenant tomorrow.
Right, but if he, you put forty in there and he says it's fifty, then you guys.
I just can't see it being that high.
No, I don't think it's fifty, fifty's hot.
So let's just put thirty thousand in there.
I say, I'm fine with thirty.
Yeah.
I don't want to get more than thirty.
Thirty, thirty, thirty.
Thirty's good.
No, I'll, I gotta call him anyway, I'll take care of it, thank you. Um, thirty. Any questions? So, Cruisers already have a dash cam?
They don't.
They don't, they don't.
No.
They have a body cam.
None of ours do.
That hangs here, the cars don't have cameras in them, and I think the cameras in it is not only for the deputy's safety, but also so they can see whatever's happening. You know, somebody jumps out, pulls a gun on them, the body cam's only gonna see a little bit of it, where the dash cam will see, like, you know, a hundred and eighty, not a hundred and eighty, but almost a hundred and eighty view. Well, not everybody here may know that, Dale, is why I'm trying to explain it.
Okay, you got that down, Mr. Bridge?
I do.
You're the man.
Cruiser cams, thirty thousand.
All right.
All right, any other questions on the police? Nope, okay, so Streets Capital Expenses, so this is Fund Two-O-One, Two-O-Two, Two-O-Two Three, and Two-O-Four. Since we did see the increase in gas tax, we are expecting additional revenue, and some of those, I can, two of, four of those line items. So any questions on the potential purchases for twenty twenty? Anything you want to add, take away?
Are we gonna be able to do any streets next year?
That'll.
Yes, I have the plan to do some streets.
Okay, that'll be separate?
That'll be in the, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get that one.
Okay.
The wood chipper, is that in conjunction with the other seventeen five?
Yes.
Okay, so you're just buying one, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Kiko, what's the, I mean, other than just calling it a weed sprayer, the one you, I don't know if ours is a tow behind you, the one that's got the big tank where they spray the curbs and stuff? Does that work fairly well for what our purposes are?
It's the easiest way to do it, yes.
Right, no, but I mean, I've seen some that are a little bit, and I'm not saying over the top fancy, but some that might be a little bit more efficient to do it, or is ours?
It takes a wand, because some of the curb we reach behind the curb bricks.
Right.
Everything, so they really can't use a tail bar, we, someone's gotta run the wand, someone drives, and they just spray it.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Cool, that's on, well, no, thank you.
Any questions on streets, anything you guys want to add, take away?
A lot of pavement.
Lot of pavement.
Yeah.
Add a lot of.
Four or five hundred thousand, you know, do the street.
Does that come in a roll?
Like grass?
Come in a roll, got two rolls of pavement, please.
That's a luge.
Kinda heavy, if I had two people that.
OSHA.
All right, Fire, this is EMS capital expenses. I know Fire Chief and Debbie did a lot of work on this, and it looks fantastic, I think that they're doing a fantastic job of making sure that their employees and citizens are covered. So any questions on the Fire EMS side of things, I'll definitely direct them down to your end, but I fully support everything that's on.
Chief, I just, I'm gonna ask you, what, your thoughts, anything that you see that we?
No, what we're looking at really basically is, is outfitting the medic that we purchased with the new load system and the cot, which is on there for twenty twenty. And then in twenty twenty-one, we have the same thing, plus a new Lucas tool, but I'm planning on for twenty-one to apply for the Workman's Comp Grant, which would pay for all three of those except for ten percent, we would be responsible for ten percent of that cost. We are not eligible for that grant until twenty twenty-one, because the city received it in twenty fourteen, and we're, like I said, we're not eligible till twenty twenty-one. And that's from, basically, it's kind of what's called a give-me grant, you put in the paperwork, you get it. And they've added the Lucas tool into that for safety reasons, because it saves a fire, a medic from having to stand up in the back of the medic doing CPR going down the road. So if we get that grant, we'll only be responsible for ten percent of that.
Chief, is Battalion Fifty-Two gonna hold up?
I'm hoping, but that was one of the things we were just, when we were talking, when you were talking about the cruisers, what I was talking about for that Charger is, if we can get that Charger, I would like to use it as our battalion vehicle, and then, and when we go to buy a new vehicle in twenty-two or twenty-three, battalion vehicle, buy a new one then, and then that, that Charger can flip over to either staff car vehicle or that, or something like that, if it's still usable.
Isn't there concern about not needing the battalion vehicle or one of the vehicles? I, I could be misspeaking, I thought we had a discussion about you potentially getting away with that because it really concerned.
Because what?
Battalion?
No, no, the battalion vehicle's definitely a need, even if our plan goes through like we're, what we're, our long-range plan is. Our long-range plan for the department right now is, within the next four years, to have this station manned with four people. And out of that four people, one person would respond, the senior person on duty would be responsible to be a chase car vehicle, basically that's the battalion vehicle. And that'll allow me to put two medics in the street and also a four-man engine company if they have to fire.
Okay. Well, Mr. Lindsey.
The, the new medic we ordered, I thought we had money in that to, to buy this cot.
No, that was.
So when it come in, it would be ready to go.
What it is, is we bought, we bought the medic unit itself out of nineteen money, and we're buying the cot and the load system out of twenty money, because the medic won't be finished and ready to have that installed until twenty.
Do you know a date yet, or a?
No, we're probably looking at, we won't deliver probably until April, May timeframe.
Okay, and it'll be a twenty model then?
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
It'll be on a Ford F-50, five-fifty chassis, four-wheel drive chassis.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief?
Are we still looking at an engine or not?
That's in Fire Capital.
Okay, we haven't got to.
Does anybody have any questions on EMS side of things?
No, all right.
And then the fire.
Wow.
It's a hundred thousand dollars a year for the firing engine, again, that's just saving it up for the first decision down the road. Does it mean we're gonna buy it in twenty twenty and make a hundred dollar dollar year payments on it?
And that'll be like paying a catch for one, and with a hundred thousand of it, cover it in twenty-three.
If we buy in twenty-three, that would, it, it may not pay the whole, four hundred thousand may not pay the whole thing, we might be able to put some money with at that time to it. But that would at least pay the majority of it. Right now, if you're looking at a new engine, what we're looking at is a rescue, rescue engine, price range right now is in between four, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Four, that's just for the apparatus.
What about the equipment, another one hundred thousand for equipment, or?
We would take, basically take the equipment that's on Engine Fifty-Two now, transfer, transfer it to that engine, and I would have it in the budget for that year, buying the engine, also buying new power tools. Basically, when I say power tools, I mean jaws, jaws a lot. But what we're looking at buying at that time is all new battery-operated. Power tools, jaws, spreaders, cutters, rams, they'll all be battery-operated instead of the hydraulic. We'll still keep our hydraulic set as a backup, but with the technology improvements with the battery-operated tools, it's the way to go. They're more versatile, more mobile, we can take them inside of a building if we need to, and also too, with the batteries that, the ones that we're looking at, we can go down to Lowe's and buy another battery if we need to, and not have to purchase it through the company.
Will we hold on to the engine we have at that point?
Yeah, we'll keep it as a, as a backup reserve engine, my only problem at that time will be where to house it.
What's that, what would, I mean, I know you probably can't give, what's that engine worth if we were to sell it in four years?
In four years, that engine will be twenty-five years old.
Look, I mean, you gotta, I mean, just a ballpark of what it might be worth?
No, because at that time.
Less than fifty thousand?
Oh, you're probably gonna be, you're five, ten thousand.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, with, with, wow, right now, there's so much surplus.
I think it looks great.
Well, not only surplus, but what OSHA, NFPA, and all the standards are now for engines, buying old engines, you see them on the line all the time. But what, mainly the people that are buying them are collectors, and they're not paying that much money.
The ladder works really good.
The what?
The ladder.
Oh, ladder truck, yeah, ladder truck's fine.
Is the quit paid for now, would be paid for this year or next year?
She gets the gold star, yes, it is.
Awesome.
Yes, it is, and that's what's allowing us to look at doing what we're doing, is the ladder truck being paid off. Paying cash for this medic is putting us in a really, really good spot. And when we look at spec-ing out a new engine, we, this gives us that timeframe to actually spec one out that meets the city, because in my opinion, in the past ten years, what apparatus was bought for the city was bought under, under what is used, or what they, what was needed for mutual aid. And we need to stop doing that and start buying equipment for what the city needs.
Okay.
Makes sense to me.
Anything else, gentlemen, ladies? All right.
Any, any plans, and then we'll move on, any plans for, at some point in the future, of expanding the building?
Yes, sir, it's in the, it's in the Fire Cap, or Fire Operating, we put in one for this year, twenty-five thousand to have the roof inspected, because if you can see, we're starting to develop leaks. And we're also want a, to get someone in this year to look at the station. No one can give me a firm yes or no. Supposedly, when the, when the station was built, what was the addition on to the station? Some part of this building was supposed to have been built to where it could be additioned up with a second story. And we want to find out, is that true, is that possible? Because we definitely need to expand the station and we need to upgrade the station with the different things that we're having to look at, especially with male and female living quarters. Right now, our bunk rooms barely, barely meet standards. If you look at actual NFPA code standards, every firefighter is supposed to have a hundred square foot of private living space.
So I'd recommend that we, we would go up, because if you take that down, that's gonna be parking.
Yeah.
So you, really, the only way you can go is up.
Right, that's, you know, and the only option we would have is, if that came down, would be to maybe extend out twelve feet, or maybe, you know, or so much feet this way. Again, then you're taking, you're right back to the same thing of taking the parking lot away.
When, when this station was built, it was planned for this area, here.
Right, I think this, this wall forward.
To go up.
To have to, second floor. To have to have a second floor.
Then we, you know, we would have to look at what we can do as far as what we would put where. Basically, what I would like to see done is maybe office space and that type of thing put on the, on the second floor. Because when you go into putting living quarters and that type of thing on the, on the second floor, you have to look at emergency exit down for the firefighters for calls and flag, or slide poles are no longer an option.
Man, that was, I was like, say, you guys bring it back to fire pole.
Oh, I would love to. I would love to have a, have a pole. The only other option we would have would be a slide.
Only if you don't move and you hit the ground.
Which I have been in houses and worked out of houses that do have fire slides.
That's awesome.
Uh, which.
We had one in Van Deen and it was awesome.
It's okay until you hit it with your rubber boots and it throws you off the slide face.
Or the guy below you didn't move.
All right.
But, yeah, but like I said, we do have it at, at the Fire Operating for, for the next four years of a 25, 25, 25, 1250 or 12, 5, 12, 5, to do station remodels because there's other things in this station, even whether, without building an addition, things that has to be done. All the carpet in the station needs to be completely ripped out and the floor from back door to front door replaced. And tiles replaced and as Mike Mr. Kiko was saying, we want to replace all the lights in the station to go to LEDs. And the furnishing in here needs to be completely replaced. These tables are junk. But we are looking at, you know, doing what came due each year. And then the, the normal things that we have, the 25,000 each year for bunker gear, that's just to keep us rotating. That way, we don't go to a point where we don't have any backup gear.
If the substation.
Hang on, Mr. Lindsey, Mr. Cook.
If we're, if we're talking about the possibility of tearing the substation down, has there been any thought to the possibility of taking a space downtown in one of the, let's say abandoned, I won't say abandoned storefronts, one of the empty storefronts?
Fake it.
Ballpark, I don't have any idea what we're talking about.
Are you thinking about a new place for the police? I think if these are renovations, we put them in here.
Oh, if it was big.
Well, no, I, I don't, I don't agree with, with that. But if, if, if we can rent a space downtown, I, possibly, I have no idea. Do you deal what going storefronts going for downtown?
Well, didn't we, at the last meeting, we talked about the potential idea of getting the old city building and putting the police there.
Turns out a lot of it, I just don't feel, I don't, I don't know the necessity of abandoning, even though it's not the base place, we have money to do some remodels in there, like just cheap carpet and something on the wall to make it better, but we don't pay any rent to stay there. I don't understand why we would abandon that place and rent a place downtown. So I, I understand that outside is not thinking, but we're gonna put some hardwood floor in there for dirt, cheap, get the carpet out, put some brush paint up until we figure out what the long term solution is that is.
Well, when that second floor comes in, you're gonna have a problem.
I'm, I'm right there with you. It's definitely a necessity. It needs to get done.
Hopefully, nobody's on the bench for it.
There's so many options for the police as far as putting them with council with toys, you know, if that ever thing comes up. Or we have the option to put up, put an offer in on our current city building and move the police there. So there's a lot that can happen with that.
I would, I would love that too, if that wasn't, if, you know, if everything fell into place, you're coming into town, boom, there's your police station that kind of sets a presence maybe.
Well, I, you know, I, in theory, it's a great idea. I.
Maybe the cook will see it and leave.
For our four or five deputies, it's all right. Other deputies use that substation that are not contracted in the city of New Carlyle. And we pay the bills over there. We pay the electric, we pay the water, we pay the technology, we pay all that. So I don't want no one to come in, that's if we would buy our current city building for the sheriffs, for our, we need to make sure that it's for our use.
For our.
For our use. Not saying we don't want to be a good community player.
Right.
And be resourceful for other people, but we can't do that as a loss to our taxpayers.
All right.
The, I thought Mr. Cook was gonna ask the question when he was talking about the building next door, but if that building would ever come down, is there any plans possibly in the future, building a bay on the outside of this wall far enough to put? Because at some point, you're gonna need more space, you know, when you buy that new engine, you're gonna have an engine that, what are you gonna do, park it outside? Well, that wouldn't last long. Somebody will have.
The new engine will fit in the present engine space. It would fit.
But the engine sitting there now?
Like I said, that will, that we'll have to look at, if we keep the engine as a reserve engine, then we would have to look at somewhere to store it. If, you know, or we may not even end up keeping it as a reserve engine. But as far as putting a bay on that side of the station, it's a possibility, but if we were gonna extend that side of the station, I'd much rather see it be used for office and crew member space.
At some point, at some point, I think that the city's.
Somewhere we're running a new fire.
The city's gonna have to build a new fire station somewhere and the, or add on to this one. And if they add it on to this one, you could always put space up above it also for offices or living or whatnot. And then, I don't know, some engineer could tell you how to connect the two if, if you add on to this one. That way, the Quint would make a good backup, even though it's 25 years old or will be. The, it can still be used as a backup, but it can't be the main line.
Right, that's where, you know, keeping per se old Engine 52, what we have now as a reserve. If we did not have the Quint, we would definitely have to keep it. But since we have the Quint, the Quint can be used as a backup engine because it has a pump, it has a water tank on it. And that truck, I, I foresee that truck lasting well longer than, than 10 more years.
How much water does that pump, does the Quint carry? Is it 500 or 1,015?
The Quint carries 350 gallons of tank.
350?
Right.
But it can hook the hydrant and then be.
Right, because again.
As a pumper.
Again, looking at the city, we are all, the, the city is entirely hydrated. We can hit a hydrant. Even if we got a dead hydrant, our next hydrant's only 350 feet away. So the Quint can easily tie into a water source.
Okay.
That's the reason with the new engine, we're looking from going from 1,000 gallons down to 750.
The levy we put on, and I'm, I, I just want to make sure my recollection is right. Was that a perpetual or was it five year?
Five year.
Has there been any discussion about saving some money? Because we don't know if that levy is gonna pass when it's.
Right, that's, that's the reason.
We're doing all these renovations, you got all this money put out. At some point now, if you go to put a second story on this thing, it's gonna be way more than what the price.
Oh, yeah, of course. Like I said, this, what we've got entering now is just renovations for what we have now.
Sure. But all this, I mean, hopefully the, I mean, you guys were working together to save some of this money because
Right.
the moment that levy would not get renewed, which I don't think it will because it's a safety levy, I'm sure I have no problem. But if it doesn't, your funds are running pretty close.
Right, exactly. And that's the reason with, with purchasing the new medic cash. We're not looking at buying any large apparatus.
Yeah.
For the next two.
And I understand that. I appreciate that, but I also think that we should be saving some money just in case in year six that we have to.
Yeah, oh, definitely.
Or whatever the case may be.
Definitely.
Sure.
Definitely.
Fantastic.
All right. Anything else on this page? Bring it on.
All right, so now we're on to water operating.
Howie just needs to find ways to cut this.
It's not happening. This is your water.
Howie's had this one.
So the thing what we want to do with our water plant is we want to maintain it. Whenever we renew our plants, we don't want to get below, behind on repairs. We want to keep up on that. I think I always done a good job with this. He can explain anything in detail if needed. We do have the repayment to the general fund in there, so that's going off in one, two, three years. And then we have the maintenance program. And it does drop down to the 53,000 on 2024 because at that point in time, it is just maintenance cost. No, I'm sorry, it's the last payment of the actual term of the agreement.
Then after that is maintenance cost.
And I can tell you the rehab high service pump building now is reduced to five. That was six, that was 15,000 in 19 and 15,020. We were able to come with some, we found another vendor to be able to help us out with valves, so they are ordering as we speak, 15,000 worth. So now we were able to save 10,000 on that project. We were able to lower that for 20.
And I think the only thing new on here from last year is the industrial pipe saw. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
So it pretty much looks, minus the numbers, the only addition to the new item has been the industrial pipe saw.
I like the idea of the, can you talk on the new well field just a little, Howie?
We are trying to put some back for the new well field to have an alternate well field. If for some reason, this well field, because 235 is close, if there is to be a chemical spill, you basically, it can contaminate the whole thing. There are ways to go about that. They drill another well or they'll use one well to keep that plume tight. But yeah, this is to have an alternate, our alternate options are not great. So we're trying to put plenty back for the future to possibly put it because it could be a good distance away from our plant.
Okay. Thank you.
And a new box utility truck is to start replacing that van they have. It's been kind of hopping around a little bit from departments.
Okay.
Would that work better than a van? Carry more stuff or more organized?
Yeah, it'd be utility box with a cover on it, like you see vendors have. We can walk in it and have stuff on the outside.
Counselor, any other questions for water?
When do you think the Adams Street Tower will come down?
It's not.
It's not.
Oh, holy wow, I don't want to deal with that, Barack.
It's coming down eventually. Where we go on, take it down.
I like that water tower, man.
I think it's the coolest thing, don't get me wrong, but from a maintenance and operational standpoint, which this is like the TVA in Tennessee. The first thing it does is generate power. All those homes that float on there, that's secondary. Same thing here with me being a licensed operator. It's a great site, but what was it built for? Provide water pressure.
And if it doesn't have water, the rest out quicker.
I know I'm close to work when I see the water tower.
That's right.
Remember Jim Boba said a restaurant.
We'd have to redo all the signs coming into the city because the water tower is on there.
All right, well, that's for another discussion. We can battle Howie on that one.
Yeah. All right, any, no questions on, any other questions, further comments on water? We'll jump over to wastewater operating. This does encompass three funds, 502, 560, and 562. Any questions can be directed to Mr. Kiko.
We're replacing.
No, no, go ahead.
We're replacing quite a bit at the wastewater plant now, aren't we, as far as the, I don't know what the stuff's called, the thing that goes like this, the elevator, what's?
Bar screen. Yeah, bar screen.
Bar screen, okay.
Yeah, it's actually, should be here within three weeks. The pump is in. Those are gonna be start up on the screen as scheduled right now for December 18th and 19th. So this two year project will be completed in mid-December. And then the primary clarifier, I got, you know, got the agreements done now, but that's the 160,000 because by the time we get it in and everything, it's gonna be 2020.
Is it gonna cost the one, whole 160? I know you already know that much, but you thought it would come in cheaper.
Well, right now, the, it is at 149, 500 and some dollars, but we have to go in case we get in there and some unseen things will come.
Right, yeah, okay.
Mr. Kiko, is this, I think we passed it already, but I'm gonna ask, I'm pretty sure it was Streets, the, the pump, that pump truck we bought a few years back for?
No, that's for this one.
Is that for this?
Silver jet.
Sure, thank you. That's for this?
The back truck?
Yeah. Is that doing all right?
Oh, oh, it's great. We just had some, you know, some engine work done to it, but that thing has been, I don't know how the city did not do what we did and keep up stuff without a truck like that.
Good.
I mean, granted, it was used. We're gonna keep babying it, but a lot of things on there are doing well. We've replaced some equipment on it. But it has been, it has saved a lot of things that we do with that truck.
Good, good to hear. Thank you. Anything else, Counselor? All righty.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
All right, Pool Capital's been, I think this is our last week.
Oh, real quick, that is paid off in 2020 too. Back trucks, less famous 2020.
What year was that again?
It is a 98.
Okay, thank you.
That's the one we bought from?
City of Union.
Yeah.
Union, okay. And it's still running? Didn't they rebuild that or something just before we got it?
They spent almost 60 or 70,000 on it three or four years before we bought it and we paid 100 for it.
So it's good for what, another four, five, 10 years maybe?
Yeah, the goal is to get, I would like to get another minimum five, get close to 10 and start budgeting here in about five years to get us a, a new one down the road.
Awesome.
Awesome. All right, Pool, Fund 505. I just threw a number in there. I don't, I just wanted a placeholder. I know they're carrying over, I think they ended up with a quite a positive balance because it was transferred in a little sooner than what we normally did, which is completely okay. But I did not know what needed to be done for the pool this year. I did not communicate with Howie when I did this. So I just kind of threw a number in there. So Mr. Kiko, glad you're coming. What needs to be done?
It's really what our main concern is, trying to tighten up the leak issue. We've had a couple vendors in and it's ranging anywhere from 20 to 40,000 to take care of the leaks. Obviously, if it gets so extreme that it's just unfeasible to do, we'll have to really take a close look at it. Building has been completely remodeled. We have some few minor things that will be, need to be taken care of. But what we're worried about is pump, things that run solid for during those three months, we'll have to do. Boiler is new, so we should have not any boiler issues. But our main concern really is if a pump and that motor go out, that runs about five grand. So we always have to have five grand in for that thing. Other than that, I don't know of any major repair or replacement of anything that is of significance.
I do, I would like to add security camera or a security system because I think that we need to have that pool covered for liability purposes.
Inside and out?
Inside and out.
What do you think that would cost? What type do you think? Are you thinking of hard wire or?
It's gonna have to be something that's gonna have DVR record itself for X amount of days. You're gonna have to have indoor, mix of indoor and outdoor cameras. The auditor, I, well, I don't wanna say the auditor, I mean, they've always on it, but we need to, one, protect the cash that goes in there. We have no indication anyone's done anything, but they like to see cash being protected. I don't want to put the employees in the sense like in their break room. I don't think that should be covered, but I think that parking lot should be covered. I think that the actual pool should be covered. And I think the entrance and exits to the building need to be covered and down. But that is gonna be a mixture of indoor, outdoor cams. We may have to up the internet for speeding purposes if it's run off wifi. We can probably get it front of the 2100.
2100?
Well, that's the cutoff for the capital purchase. Anything for 2100 is not considered a capital purchase. Help to report it. So I mean, we could put that, we could just cover that under full maintenance too. If you guys want to keep the 25,000 in there, that gives a little more leeway, but I would like to see it. And April, what's your opinion on this? I mean, you're the manager, you have to deal with it.
I want the cameras.
Yeah.
I mean, the cameras would be very beneficial.
They would? Okay. Just the, you can go back and review stuff.
I guess, one question I would have, since the pool manager is sitting here, what would you like to see done? What do you think needs to be done at the pool? Either or. I mean, this whole thing's pretty much a one list.
Well, we need to fix the leaks and we talked about a bladder, maybe then maybe being 40,000, I think. We kind of differ there because I see that as a temporary fix where the liner, relining the entire pool would be more of a permanent fix, but that's like 80,000. So it's double yours, whereas yours fixes the deep bin, the liner fixes the leak problem. And then as far as the building, we have the restroom floors done. I'd like to see the main walkway done, the entrance when you walk in, just to finish that off. A few minor things, maybe a concession, our windows broke last year, we need a new window, but I think that's probably under capital expense.
Yeah, those would be just daily maintenance and a budget line item?
Well, not if we're ever, if you gotta replace the whole thing, if we're ever 21, the cash might be a capital purchase.
Well, there's repair and maintenance and, yeah, is that like 100 bucks, a couple hundred bucks?
No, to replace the whole entire window.
Yeah, I think the vendor we had in it would be that.
Thousand, 200.
Yeah, somewhere near maybe.
Gotcha. Okay, so note that for your budget stuff.
How old?
How old?
51 years old.
Versus updating the whole filtration system.
Yeah, no, we're good with.
What's Counsel's thought on putting a privacy fence around the pool perimeter? Do you have any complaints of people just walking down the street and looking at people or even making people unawkward, uncomfortable?
Some people always complain. I mean, the fencing for what it is, it's not gonna keep anybody out, but.
It's more of a privacy thing for the people.
I also have some parents, and I have a grandparent that brings her children. She's disabled, she's on oxygen. So she sits in her car at the fence while her grandkids are in swimming. She doesn't want to get out and come in. She stays in there fishing car and she can see them.
Just a thought.
They drive by. So that is, you know, the fact that it's open and parents can comfortably drive by. See all my kids here, my kid's not here, whatever.
Second one. Gotcha. Cook?
I would, I would think that having it open also makes it.
Inviting?
Inviting.
Yeah, blue water.
Yeah, you see.
Water is blue.
All those people having fun. I mean, it, it's true.
All right, I'm about ready to say it. Ready?
Done.
Water slide.
I.
We need a water slide.
We need one. That's.
We get one for what, 15, 20?
I was gonna, I was gonna say it's probably 25.
Oh, I thought it was gonna be way more than that.
Get like park equipment?
I would, I mean, that's our, that's our, that's not ours. That's, that's one of the biggest things everybody, you know, I mean, you get people saying, well, there's nothing here. It's a pool. Right, we said it's a pool. It's not, it's not the.
It's not a water park.
Right, it's not a water park. It's not aquatic center.
Is the slide gone?
We've got a slide. It's, you know, it's, it's this tall from the ground.
Yeah, it's not very big, okay.
I, I would love a, you know, I think everyone would love to see, and there's plenty of, there's plenty of edge room. I mean, you know. I mean, you know, there's, that, that pool is massive. I mean, it is the, probably one of the biggest pools around, but, um, yeah, I would love to see a, a slide someday. That's up to you guys, but, um, I, I do want to ask you that. She'd gotten a quote from, I don't know that name that company was, to, to reline it. It was like, what do, what do you think of that, seriously? I mean, it was like seventy-three thousand.
Yeah, I, I got the quote and I know we talked to that guy one time and it comes down to that surface that's underneath because it moves.
Right.
And since we have such negative pressure, he said, usually it's not an issue. However, I know better with bladders and adhesion to concrete if the surface is not one hundred percent stable.
Yeah.
And we do have quite a bit of negative pressure in that deep end.
Yeah.
I, I love the line, the whole thing. The, what, what we were looking at just for the deep end is it's lining on the backside. So it's, it's a, it's darn near permanent. They use it for casting manholes. So it's the same thing as that, it's good for, I wouldn't say life, but I'd love to do it all in one.
We're still doing concrete repair every year and cleaning.
And that, and that will still, and that's our problem, it shifts so much, especially during cold. See where splash zone is built up out of the water table, you know, so they, they empty theirs, it stays dry.
Yeah.
We can't do that with ours because ours has a pressure relief in the deep end. So, yeah, when you get into liners and stuff and they get on site and they see different things of how things shift, then it's, you've got to be very careful, it's a lot of money.
Could I do a simulation of stabilizing the deep end while doing the liner?
No, it, it's just where it's sitting.
To, well, it said, I have to look at email, something about adding two ports and we're most of, usually they do one. You would have to.
I think when we, we talked with them, there was quite a bit of stuff because it sits in the water table, deep in the water table.
Go ahead.
Let me ask, can we relocate our deep end?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You can buy some land on up the road and build a brand-new pool.
If you have enough money, you can do anything you want.
If we go off to the back right, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm being completely serious. We, we dig out a hole and we put some in it and it.
The whole pool is in, is in.
Cause the creek's right there.
That is right there, we go down, we sit down.
You kind of need a salt pump under the deep end to keep the water out of it during the winter months. Which I don't think you can do.
I don't know, it's like forty thousand for a lot of things I have to fix and then you have eighty thousand dollar fix like this, but if you need eighty thousand fix, you still got to take care of the deep end that's moving. So it's just like, what's the?
And, and another thing, how old is this pool? I.
Fifty-one. It'll be fifty-two this year.
Be fifty, it's fifty-two years old. So the pool, by being fifty-two, is almost at the end of its life cycle. Is that not correct?
It, oh, by, by engineering terms, it has passed its life cycle.
Oh, yeah, fifty-two, yes. So at some point, the pool, again, just my opinion, is going to become another money pit because we're constantly going to have to throw money into it. I'm not advocating to close it down, so, you know, just a second, April. I can feel they're burning those eyes into me. At some point, if we're going to keep a pool, we're going to have to look at in the future, I don't know how far in the future, of building a new pool, either ripping this one out and, well, we have water problems there now, so you probably wouldn't want to build it back there, but it would have to go someplace else or put a, what do they call that, a spice pad thing in. I don't know, I don't know, you know, those are like a hundred and some thousand dollars. I know, uh, Speedway, Speedway over in Springfield, they paid for one of that's over there in Snyder Park, didn't they, not? That's what I heard. Do you know anything about that?
I, I remember there too, but I don't know if it's actually true or not.
There was partial grant for that one.
Oh, was there? And I don't know, is there grants out there to replace the pool?
Typically, typically there is not. It takes a donation of a private organization to help fund that. But I can tell you Thomas Cloud Park in Huber, the splash pad they have, that was two hundred and sixteen thousand. So that one's not a big one.
Yeah, it's very.
Oh, wow.
In my experience, there's, they still tend to be a money pit because there's nobody there monitoring it and so it gets destroyed, it's messed up, and you have no income.
And your, and your liability's probably higher too.
You still have money and chemicals going into the water, but you have no income. We have income on a daily basis.
Yeah. And, and another thing, I don't know what Council thinks or wants to do with it, but they, maybe there ought to be a line item for maintenance. Uh, I know you've got pool maintenance here, but a, a line item for other things that wants to be done that's not related to the pool, like the cement or there's other things in the bathroom, I know she told me she would like to.
There's a budget line item under pool maintenance that covers the hot water tank.
So that don't need to be in, in the CIP?
Yeah, they're like hot water tank, plumbing.
It goes in CIP if, if it's the dollar amount. So if it's, if he needs a hot water heater that's twenty-two hundred dollars, it's going to be considered a capital purchase.
Right.
If it's two thousand dollars, it's not considered a capital purchase.
But in the future, because eventually this pool's going to just collapse. It's just a matter of time. It could be another fifty years.
The goal is to put money, a little bit of money into it every year to maintain it so it does not become a Madison school where it has had no money put into it and then all of a sudden it's falling apart and it's beyond repair. And I feel like we've slowly been turning it around the last few years to where it's no longer on that downward slope, it's on its way.
Personally, I think you've done an awesome job on turning the pool around because I know in fifteen, I was a very big advocate of shutting it down. And in sixteen, uh, Council at that time decided to give it one more year. And, I don't know, you made like five thousand, fifty-two hundred dollars, which was, you know, you lost forty thousand, what was it, fifteen or fourteen or fifteen? I forget. And then to come back, you know, a year later and, and to, to profit tells me somebody wasn't handling the money right or something wasn't going on the way it should have been going. Uh, and I think you've done an awesome job in what you've done with the pool. We have meats, the swim meets and stuff there now. I think we have a swim team, I believe. Uh, you know, stop me if I say something that isn't correct. We have newer equipment that, that was bought from, I don't even know where you guys went and got it from.
And new bathrooms.
And we have new bathrooms, but there's still work in the bathrooms that, that I understand that, that she would like to get done that may not fall under pool maintenance. I mean, you know, maybe I'm just babbling.
You mean, you mean capital expense, right?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be a, a non-capital expense, I think. I don't know what, what it would be.
Dale, did you have something?
I've been told the pool property goes down New Claw by quarter ways.
We've had somebody ask about that recently.
It goes, it goes to the tornado siren. Basically, that's the property line right there. Then a little bit of woods might be in the city, but the rest is another private owner.
I have a question.
Who's your good, Dale?
Um, you know how, um, like the capital expenses has like twenty-five thousand a year for a new structural firefighting gear? Or say you could have that towards a new fire station, but it's like twenty-five thousand a year. Could you do something like that towards the expense, you know, that's coming up for the pool? Like the.
Three five hundred for safety equipment.
Or.
Whatever.
Or.
I need a new, I need an AED. I don't have an AED. I had been borrowing one from the fire department.
What is it?
Clear, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And the one that we had borrowed.
About two thousand, I think, twenty-five hundred.
For children and most of the park people are children, so we need, we need an AED.
What do those cost?
We need to add that to the cap. Because that's clearly going to be over two, twenty-one hundred dollars.
Yeah, you're looking at about twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars for an AED.
Are they that much now? I was thinking about twenty-five.
The reason being is because most AEDs now are equipped to be able to use for adults and children both, which that's what she needs.
And those are actually required, I think, uh.
So I should put three thousand in for the safety thing?
Well, yeah, three thousand would cover it.
Three thousand would cover that?
But that should be bought before the pool opens, that's required.
No, it's not required, no.
But you should have it.
Yeah, it's strong, strong.
Oh, the AED, oh, that, that should not be discussed.
No.
No, that should be done.
Discussion, we're getting one. I'm putting three thousand in there, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Chief.
Go ahead, Chief.
Along with her AED, one thing you have to understand with that AED, you'll also incur a maintenance contract for those, for that AED. And what we can look at doing is having their AED put under our maintenance contract. It won't call, it should not increase our maintenance contract.
Well, if it does, let me know because then we have to worry about your levy funds paying for her.
Right, exactly, what I'm saying, I, I don't think it will.
We get there. All right, what else in the pool needs to be put in? Because last year, I think that we failed to put a lot of things in the pool and we, or it wasn't clear enough. So I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page with that.
I mean, I think every few years we need to, we need a new, a few new tubes this year, like Gert tubes, new umbrellas.
Yeah.
And those are, we can do those under maintenance. Um, they're hundreds, fifty dollars, hundred dollars chairs, things like that.
Howie, what do you think of?
That's not kind.
What do you think of your filters? I mean, is your, I mean.
But just when, I mean.
Are you OK there?
They're sand, yeah, I mean, we never know when one could go out. I mean, they're fiberglass, if you get the sun, chlorine, chemicals, and then when one goes, we go get a new one.
Okay.
Was that for the pump you said?
They sit outside, they're the filters.
How much is a pump?
The pump runs, um.
I think it was forty-five hundred for the last one.
Okay, do you want to keep the pump into the general pool maintenance description or do we have a separate line item for the pump?
Whichever way it would work better, I would think.
Well, here's the thing with that, if you don't earmark it right now, twenty-five thousand pool maintenance, we can go out and spend twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine on everything but a pump.
Okay.
Well, then we need, then put a line item of pumping.
Yeah, because I mean, the pumps are a pretty crucial piece of equipment.
She said.
Temperamental.
You don't use it now. With that being said, if we had five thousand in for the pump, do you want to take twenty-five thousand off the pool maintenance?
Could it, could it be pump equipment? And that would include the pump, the filter, the, I don't know what other parts, the chlorinator, if you have a chlorinator on it, which I think you do. I mean, wouldn't that all fall under the, under that?
What's wrong?
Trying to, trying to figure out the quality, because it's repair and maintenance when you're, when you're replacing existing.
You know, when we're talking about all these other smaller items, when we go to do the actual appropriation budget, that's where we can make sure that we put enough money in these.
But it's not earmarked at that point in time. You put it in the CIP and just because it's.
You're considering it because it's at a certain dollar limit to be in the CIP.
Yeah, that, and I think that if it's earmarked, if you just put it in a line item, it doesn't mean it's going to get spent. It can be used on anything under the sun as long as it qualifies as that line item. Last year, there was a lot of confusion about this pool CIP. This year, I want to make it solid. So it's light out.
I wouldn't even have a problem putting a miscellaneous line in the CIP for.
Yeah, but then who decides how to spend it?
This may, this, this may not sound right, but whatever the manager thinks that she needs, there'd be money there that she could come to you and say, hey, can we do this? Or, or she can say, hey, you know, I want to, I'd like to spend some of this money to buy, I don't know.
If you're, if a pump goes out and you buy a new pump.
New sand.
You're buying, you're not repairing or maintaining an existing pump. So if your pump under repair and maintenance would not qualify because you're actually buying a new pump. It's not like you're repairing the pump that's already there. It would be a whole new purchase.
Right.
So that would be a new capital purchase.
So would that have to be in the CIP or? Well, then I would put, how much did the pump cost last year or last time we replaced one? Then we just replace one.
It was about five thousand.
Like last year?
Five thousand.
So if it was five thousand, I'd put six in there for a pump.
And related equipment. That way it covers what else they would need.
Filter or.
But if the pump, if the pump goes and you spend the money on that, that only leaves you, it could take the whole six thousand for the pump in another year with the way things go up. See what I'm saying? So if you're going to add related equipment, you might want to look at.
When we were discussing doing improvements, you wanted to leave five thousand in there just in case something happened to the pump. Therefore, it didn't free up money to purchase other things that you're needing. So that's what you think, put it in there to free up in the other, in the line item and the budget.
Yeah, if it's just a repair, then we won't use the one for the new one. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if you, if you. If you need to buy twenty dollars worth of seals for it.
Or whatever, that can be taken.
You take it out of that, if you need the whole thing, then.
Find a whole brand-new one, you're not repairing what you have, that's a brand-new capital purchase.
Right.
So that needs to be a line item in the CIP. If it's used, great, if not, then it just.
Carries over.
But at least it's earmarked for a pump.
Right. Okay.
Can you go with that? Good with that?
So you looked at it five or six thousand for that pump?
Right, put five, but I can change it to whatever you guys want me to do.
Well, every, things go up every year, so I would rather have six thousand in there and not need it than to put five thousand in there and need fifty-five hundred. I mean, does that make sense?
I mean, it does.
We have a price limit in a couple of years. I, I, six would probably be closer to covering it.
Let's do seven.
Okay.
That way if it doesn't, we'll just carry it over.
I think so.
We got labor costs might go up, we don't, we don't know what's changed in past years.
Well, didn't the city put the last one in?
Yeah, we put, we put.
Yeah. So you, you, I mean, you still have labor costs, but not by having something outside leverer come in and do it. You know, another company coming and doing it. But are, are we covering miscellaneous things that may come up that, that she would like to get or?
If that's the case.
You know, need or, or whatever.
We, we have the line item for repair and maintenance. If they need to repair something that's already there, that's fine.
What if she wants to buy something new that?
And she need, they.
It's only a couple of three hundred dollars.
So we can, well.
If it's only a couple of three hundred dollars.
That's not.
I mean. Well, I understand that, but if she finds something, and I have no idea what it would be.
That could be a line item on the budget.
It's a line mine in the budget, so when the budget, they'll have to get together and find out a good number to get them through the year.
Okay.
Do we need?
So now, so what I'm trying to say is like, we're, we pass it with the AED and a pump and then, you know, midway through the year, she has some toxicity come in that's not in the budget. We'll just have to do what we did with the trucks. We'll just reopen the CIP, add the line item in there for whatever she needs and then put it into your council and just redo it.
So I think she has some good ideas and I think it's not going to cost, you know, lots of money, like thousands of dollars, but it could cost, you know, four or five thousand. And I think that if we're going to have the pool, it should be presentable.
As long as the pool's making money, we need to improve.
Well, it, it, right now, it's making money. Well, and it, right now, it's making money. Twenty-seven thousand dollars is making money, right?
We got to put money back in, you know, we got to keep people coming back in.
Well, that's...
She's done a great job of getting people in the gates.
I want to touch on a couple of things, and I, for obvious reasons, I won't get into anything too deep on this exact subject, obviously. But, one, you mentioned cameras, I think it's a great idea, because every year, she gets somebody who steals somebody's shoes, or somebody's wallet, I'm serious, it happens.
I'm going to put five thousand in for security.
But also, we talked...
Maybe lockers.
Somebody's been there at night.
That's what I was going to say.
You said they're stealing.
Last, last year, we had spoke, Randy, I think also, about lockers.
Oh, yeah, we did, but I don't think that'd be under, is that going to be...
It was, I looked, one that had like thirty pockets, you know, with combination lock, or pad locks, it was like six, seven hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Right, but...
Yeah, that'll fall under the, she can put like extra money in the miscellaneous line item or something.
We had a lot of requests for that last year, so people could lock their stuff up, but, does council want to put, I mean, does council want to address anything else with your suggestions with the, with the full, with the deep end, and/or looking at the slide?
Yes, I need to know.
I mean, I'm not going to give my two cents on it.
Where would, where would the slide go, first of all? Would it be replacing the slide that's there now, or would it be in addition to that? I don't, I don't know if I should ask who.
Can I, what I, can I, because we're going to be talking about this again. Can I just instruct Howie to go and do some research, get some numbers, some ORD data numbers, and then bring it back? We'll talk about this during the 2020 operating work session. Because right now, it's just, we're talking about stuff we don't have any really solid updated numbers about, or game plan.
But should, but should we have something in the CIP to cover that for...
Well, we have to, well, once, once we do the more research, you get more updated information.
But you want this ready for Monday, correct?
Right, and just leave it as is. Like I said, once we get it back in there, we're not, this is going to be mended when we do the budget entry.
Right.
So I have to mend it.
I think the camera should be added to it.
Right now, I got the pool maintenance at twenty-five, I got AED for three thousand, and pump and related equipment for five, and I have security up at five, because the security camera system, I need to make sure...
Pump was, pump was at seven.
Oh, yeah, seven, I didn't change that yet, mental note.
Because Howie said it would probably be about six to even buy it now.
Yeah, and then security, I want to make sure we get enough cameras, because some of those, they're going to be attached to the building, and they're going to have to zoom into that water. So I need to make sure that whatever camera we actually get is going to be good enough camera, they can zoom and still see what's going on, on the backdrop of that water.
And how's the lighting at the pool? Do you need any more lighting there?
Lighting was great.
We replaced it all this last year.
They're a good job on that.
And then, long-term, not for twenty, twenty, I would recommend, we have a parking issue. We could move the skate park and take over the skate park for parking.
I would love to move the skate park to one of the tennis courts instead of park.
The skating park back there is not good.
You know, I only see maybe...
I've been saying that for three, four years now. Let's do it.
The most people I've ever been there is, is like two or three.
What, a skate park?
Oh, yeah.
It's popular.
It's very popular, but it needs to be out in the public where there's more eyes on it.
That, too, and like, if you think of where it's at now, it's not walkable to any kid who wants to use the skate park. They want to clear across town and get to it.
Right.
And of course, when I say take, put in tennis courts, I don't know if that's what I want to do, but I do have three there, but I also know in spring, a lot of people use those tennis courts.
They do.
You know, but is that something we just add us in and add? I think it needs to be moved to a more central part of our town.
Well, and that creates a domino effect, kind of similar with this and that building. If you move it, the pool's gotten more popular over the years, it's growing some. So parking is always a problem. So, hang on.
I was going to say, suggest that the skate park could go in on the lake area unless...
At where?
It's a different... At West Lake.
Yeah, but we don't own that land, we have to have an agreement with the city, I mean, the school board, because of liability, then we got you guys involved in it, so, I mean, I'm willing to the idea as long as it's not...
I mean, we're carrying liability insurance.
But then pops up...
But you're talking about a city function, and a city-owned thing, that's on property that the city don't own.
If they have, if they decide to sell that land, then we've got to uproot it again and move it.
Or we lose it.
I would like to see that Smith Park, I mean, that's just my opinion.
I was going to say, I, I don't see them doing anything. I mean, they have absolutely, when we ask them, because we want to put an orchard there, is that we don't ever anticipate, ever, using that piece of land.
All right.
Will we sell it to you? If I, as much as get rid of it, donate it.
But Randy, what I was thinking is, if you do move that somewhere, whether it's a school, or then, wouldn't that, in theory, couldn't it open up that current property for more parking? Parking's a big issue down there.
Oh, no, no, I was going to say, dog park.
Oh.
We've got a dog park that's going in.
Parking, parking, parking would be more...
Yeah, we could take that fence down and make that additional parking for them.
Because don't they park across the street now?
Yeah, and it's...
And the kids are running back and forth or whatever?
And we don't even know.
You get the Madison Street School down, you can put it down there.
You can use it as long as you make sure it doesn't get covered up.
Yeah.
So...
You don't think it's hard to use it for that?
I'm surprised.
It'll hold in for a while.
She found the agreement to it last year at the pool.
All right, so again, pool, maintenance and equipment, twenty-five thousand, AED, three thousand, pump and related expenses, seven thousand, security, five thousand. Are we all on the same page, okay with that?
Yeah, I'm on page twelve.
Page twelve, oh.
All right, cemetery fund, any questions or concerns on the cemetery? We have city building repairs, twenty-five thousand, and then five thousand for river repair, and seven thousand five hundred for attachments.
Any questions?
No.
You got something, Mr. Graham?
I think we got a couple old, two sections we haven't got into yet, but don't quote me on that.
Yeah, we have a five-acre parcel that's kind of behind RD Holder, that is, we let grow up a little bit, that's for future. So up on the hill is what we're filling, and then we have a five-acre piece back there that we haven't even touched yet. I'd have to give a Greg, I forget what the official count would be on that, but, yeah.
We'll catch a deal on one if you want.
We'll give you a better deal, but you have to use it within twenty-four hours.
Oh, well, good, good for you. Did you, did you, the flooring, does that need to go in there? If you guys...
For the ceiling floor?
Huh? No, for the pool, I forgot, you guys have mentioned it.
Yeah, we got to do something there.
The main walkway, to match what you guys put in the bathroom?
Do you want me to change the definition to keep it in maintenance part of the twenty-five? Do you want a completely different line item?
How much would it cost?
I have no idea.
He did the bathrooms for...
He quoted seven, and he ended up only doing, what, three, three and some change, I think?
Oh, really?
Yeah, there was, I think it ended up being a thirty.
Walkway also goes back into where the people sit to take the, probably goes out of area back there.
Yeah, it's the walkway and then the whole...
Probably.
Should you say twenty-five, did you just make it thirty? For pool maintenance.
Yeah, because he came back at like seventy-seven hundred, he did it for three thousand.
Okay.
I was like, wow.
What about, what about just...
Thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five hundred.
And then what you can do is get some information on it, if we need to change it from your actual operating budget, we'll put it in. So new flooring.
Would that just be under the pool maintenance, or would it be a separate line item?
I think it should be a separate line item, but I also think, too, at some point in time, that we need to go back and take some out of pool.
And you said you was going to do, what, thirty-five? I think five would probably be better, just to be on the safe side.
Five?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, my opinion...
Is everybody okay with that? We're not going to use it, I mean, it is.
And, and again, all this, these numbers will all be changed next year anyhow.
Okay, so back to the pool maintenance. You guys want to keep the twenty-five thousand in there, because there's been a lot added to the pool. We've just added...
You're up to forty-five.
We just added five, ten.
Forty-five.
I just added twenty thousand dollars.
I say just, I mean, leave it, because depending on what he finds out, as far as how he wants to approach some of the leaks, and if, you know, and what other things, I mean, it's going to, like you said, it'll get changed again anyway.
Rather have it not needed, than need it not have it.
I'm good with that. Any questions on the cemetery?
All right, well, page thirteen.
All right, I have one more thing before we go. I got an email from the auditors, we have to set up our exit conference, and that is what we did at the Schaller House last year, similar to what we did previously. So they have some available dates, this is going to require you guys to let me know what's best for everyone. It's not mandatory for council to be there, but I do need to make sure that we're supposed to let you guys be there. It's only for council, the current people who are being set exit time for the... It's for our yearly audit that we do, so I'll go and the auditor's, we'll update council what to find. Yep, which is all made public access fact. So eighteenth during the day.
What day is that?
It's a Monday. We have the eighteenth day, nineteenth day of this month.
What time?
Oh, this month.
It's open, so...
Like two o'clock, or?
You guys want, yep, whatever it's best for.
We have a council meeting that night, too, right?
We do have a council...
And a work session.
I mean, if, the sooner the better, I can make whatever you think.
You can do, you can get all knocked out on the eighteenth, or you can do the nineteenth, or you have the morning of the twentieth.
I'm fine with the eighteenth, I mean...
Yeah, Monday will be fine.
I'm just getting cranky.
So what time you want to do?
It's up to you guys, it's really up for everyone.
How long will it take, you think?
Usually an hour.
An hour?